Yeah, we're gonna start. Okay. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 8th, 2013. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
All right, we're gonna have a modified agenda for tonight, so not the normal business. For the first hour, we've invited our state representatives, both from the House and from the Senate. But before we do that, I do want to take one minute and do a recognition if I could. Mr. Lambert.
My friend. We didn't get a chance to do this before the election, so...
That's right, you lost.
What I'd like to do is just present to you in recognition of your service from town of Litchfield as six years of the Board of Select member. Thank you for all your service, my friend.
Thank you.
So I'll turn the floor over to our delegates. I don't know if you want to start from right to left, from my left to right, from introductions?
Give me a quick introduction, yeah.
Okay. My name is Frank Byron. I am a state representative for Litchfield.
Ralph Bohm for Litchfield. This is my fourth term. Three of them have been education, and I'm the ranking Republican in Education Committee.
I'm Donna Soucy. I'm the state senator for District 18, which includes the wonderful town of Litchfield and five wards in Manchester, wards five through nine. Currently serving in my first term, and I serve on the Judiciary and Executive Departments and Administration Committees.
I'm George Lambert. I am in my second term at the House, and I am on the Legislative Administration Committee. And interestingly, even in my second term, I'm the ranking Republican in Legislative Administration.
Well, first welcome and thank you again for coming out on behalf of the Board and the community. This is gonna be somewhat of an informal town hall kind of session. I think we did forward some...
Because this is the town hall?
It's the town hall, yep. We did forward some kind of questions and some of our thoughts. I didn't know if anybody wanted to maybe address those first or raise them as topics. We'll also open it to the floor for any questions from both other town departments and public members. Again, unless it gets rowdy, I won't do anything but listen.
And I'll stay out of the way so I get a camera shot for all of you. Who would like to ask their first question or their first thing?
Yeah, I think we just take questions if anybody has any.
Yeah, I'm open for questions. Go ahead.
I'd just like to ask our delegation, you know, a lot of us in the towns are interested in how the budget's going to fare and how, you know, our block grant money, the highway block grant money's going to shake out. And I'm just wondering if you as our representatives feel that there will be a bipartisan agreement that would allow for an increase so that our block grant money could be increased as we go forward?
Okay, the, oh, stop. The budget passed the House with a 12 cent gas tax increase, which we heard from the Senate is a no-go. The problem also in the House budget is 27 percent of the gas tax revenue is not being used for roads. It's being siphoned off for Department of Safety and other things as which we're trying to fight. I mean, yeah, some, you know, let's have the Department of Safety use, get their money from the general budget, just like every other department, or not as much as 27 percent. And that's, problem is where the block grant money is going. It's going out of not where it's supposed to go. The Constitution believes says may be used for, and that may is getting be used up to 27 percent now. So that's where it is right now, and I say the budget is one-third done. It passed the House, which means now it's gotta go to the Senate. The Senate makes their changes for the next third, and then the other third is the two part, the two, the House and the Senate fighting over the differences.
Specifically, the block grant money, according to the sheets that were handed out by the Finance Committee, basically are flatlined at $30 million, and that's for '14 and '15. The amount of money that was in the budget for 2013 was $250,000 higher than what's gonna be given in '14, '15. So it looks like it's gonna be a slight decrease over what we had received, or will receive in '13.
I think the funding debate for block grants is really gonna come down to two different funding sources. The Senate has taken a position in support of gambling, and there are monies set aside from the anticipated licensing fee to fund road and bridge reconstruction. The House has taken a different tact with the gas tax, and I think, as Ralph said, we're one-third there. So once the Senate has taken a position in addition to the gambling on how monies will be expended, then separate delegations from the House and Senate will meet to try to hammer those out. I mean, ideally, if everybody's willing to compromise, you probably will see some combination of revenues from gambling, I think, a smaller gas tax. But that remains to be seen. The gambling casino bill has been sent over to the House, hasn't been scheduled for hearing yet. I understand there's gonna be a joint committee. It'll be the Ways and Means and Finance Committees that hear it together. But it probably won't be until June that we start to get a better idea of what the overall picture is gonna look like. Certainly, a lot of recognition that not only our state roads are in disrepair, but there are a number of local communities that have had to close roads because the funds just haven't been there to make those necessary repairs happen, and we just can't allow ourselves to continue down that spiral, because if we don't catch up, it'll be an even bigger problem along the way.
Well, since all those guys are gone, I'm gonna hop in. Highway block grants are one way in which the town receives income from the state. There's a lot of other ways as well. And as well as looking at the highway block grant money, one should be acutely aware of some vocabulary called downshifting, which there was a lot of discussion about over the last two years. There is so much more in the way of downshifting on your way. If I were a selectman, I would be incredibly concerned about it, because a lot of things that are stuck in the current budget are gonna cost the town a lot more money and the taxpayers, both at the town level and at the county level. So everyone's tax bill is going up.
Thank you, Will.
Just, you know, we touched on block grant, and then you got close to one of my other questions. You know, one of the other challenges has been the ongoing indefinite, yet called temporary suspension of certain revenues that municipalities used to get. Revenue sharing has been temporarily suspended since 2009. Rooms and Meals has been frozen since 2010, more or less. You know, there's a wonderful state law with a match that has never been achieved of, that calls for a 60-40 split of that money. You know, we're down to about 25 percent again. You know, now I do, I mean, I've seen reference to a $5 million of Rooms and Meals in the '15 budget. You know, I saw it on a spreadsheet. I didn't see it in language anywhere yet, so I got a little, I was a little questionable on that, so...
Can I go first? Because you guys went...
Yeah, then we'll go the other way.
Oh, excellent, okay.
Then we'll go the other way.
That sounds good. Actually, that's a disadvantage for you, because you have to go after me, but... If I were you, you know, I'd look at the overall picture and realize that we have these dedicated funds, and the dedicated funds were an enormous topic of conversation in the House last Wednesday. The fact is that all of the money that's set aside, we're talking about $5 million in that particular case, if the budget goes through as approved right now, well, that $5 million probably won't be there, because as part of the budget, we've just approved the ability for the governor and a finance, a financial committee made up for members of the Senate, the House, to go and raid all of the funds that they want to from anywhere to go and cover shortfalls anywhere in the revenue base. So dedicated funds, well, I wouldn't worry about them as being anything you need to worry about, because there's no money coming out of them.
Earlier question about revenue sharing, and in particular Rooms and Meals, you're right that it's never reached that 60-40 split, although I will say, up until 2009, we were actually progressing back towards getting closer, and it was actually the late Senator John King who had been advocating for that issue for many years that got it moving in the right direction again. You know, the state is in the same situation. I mean, I don't see the ability, and, you know, I'm still going through the House budget at this point. I do see authority for the governor to take money from existing dedicated funds. I don't know that that revenue stream in particular will be one of them. But I think we have to start moving in the other direction, and part of what may drive that is another revenue source, and I think that on the Senate side, as I said, we at least took a step towards enacting another revenue source with the projection of $80 million. Certainly, one of my priorities is restoring things like revenue sharing. That's critical. We're all in this together. The state has made some cuts, but the cities and towns have made just as much, and we need to find a way to at least start moving forward again on those issues.
Yeah, the big cut that was made on downshifting was on the House side is the county, money going to the county home, the county hospital. Big, and that's gonna cause your county taxes to go up. That was the biggest downshifting. Yeah, and the revenue sharing, it's, the problem is, is that some people wanna spend, 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 and they don't look at, you know, like we balance our checkbook at home. You know, we have, this is how much money I'm making, so this is only how much I can spend. We have some people up there is, no, we need to spend this much money, so let's give ourselves a raise, you know, by adding higher fees and higher taxes. So that's one of the things they've done, is Medicaid expansion is a big thing, it's gonna cost us a lot of money, and those kind of things, which, let's keep adding and adding and not looking at what don't, what should we do? Let's start with, my idea on the financing should be, this is how much money we're going to get. Now, let's see, what's mandated by law that we have to spend the money on? Now, what's left over? And it's not being done that way this time.
A couple of points I'll just make. George brought up a point earlier about the dedicated funds. The numbers that I have is there's $554 million in those dedicated funds that is able to be taken, if need be, to balance off budgets and things like that. According to the figures I have, again, from Finance Committee, in 2015, there is a $5 million increase in the meals and rooms tax. Whether we'll see that or not, I don't know, but that's what it shows. But the '14 numbers are basically flat. And to the question, the issue that Ralph brought up about the downshifting, basically what happened is each county has a cap on how much it, how much it max, it will spend upon the county homes. So in other words, if you hit that cap, then the state pays for anything above and beyond the cap. What the state has done now is they've raised the cap, okay? And that basically is gonna mean a shifting to the counties somewhere in the neighborhood of $7 million. The numbers that I have for Hillsborough are that we're gonna get hit in '14 with an increase of about $267,000, and this is across the county, so it's gotta be divided out by, I think it's the population, if I'm not mistaken, of the towns. And then for 2015, the number goes up to 1.7, we'll call it 1.8 million dollars. So over the biennium, the '14-'15 biennium, we end up getting hit with roughly $2.1 million on additional county expenses. Again, as is said, if nothing changes in that budget. So we're still in the early, as the Senator said, we're still in the early sections of this budget. That could change going, and I'm sure it will change going forward. Where it goes, I don't know.
Now, on the county side, the county does have a surplus which has been being used, been used over the last six years or so to keep the tax rate even. That surplus is starting to go away, so I don't know how much is going to be left.
How about from the floor?
I have a comment.
Mr. President, if you could.
Chris Paschke, Litchfield. To the average Joe sitting in the audience like myself or watching on TV, we hear things like roads in disrepair, which they are, but then we hear that the money that is dedicated to repair those roads has been raided for years, which means we have to pay more in gas taxes. Of course, there's no guarantee that that money's not gonna be raided. We all know it will, because we will hear the same thing again the next meeting, it's the roads are still in disrepair, because problems never really get solved. Then we hear we have, we have to compromise. Well, compromise, the choices we have are additional taxes, or gambling, or both. My definition of compromise is cut the budget 10 percent from what it was last year, or cut it 20 percent, compromise at 15. But it's just a change in definition, and I think that's where the disconnect is between the people who can conquer it and the people sitting at home. Downshifting, that's a political way to cut. Doesn't matter, it's all coming from my pocket. We hear state money, we hear federal money, doesn't matter, it's all from my pocket. So we could send it to one place, they'll shift it to another place, shift it to another place, but it's still all the money from the people sitting at home. We hear the state made cuts already. Well, we all know what the definition, the political definition of a cut is. It's different from the definition of anybody that's watching in the audience right now. You just had a gas tax increase, and I just heard there was a cigarette tax increase. Now, I never smoked a cigarette in my life. I think it's a disgusting habit, but we're up to, what, almost two bucks a pack of cigarettes just in taxes, and that's probably still not enough, because that'll have to go up. But we're gonna bring gambling into the state, which is probably gonna bring so many of our other problems in. We'll get the one-time $80 million, but that won't be enough, because like an addiction, you get the money, it's spent, it's gone, that's the new bottom line, and you're gonna need more. So what next will we bring? We might as well start talking about what the next vice we bring in to the state, because gambling's not gonna be enough. Again, I don't expect an answer from anybody, because there is no answer. It's just my answer, my solution would be just truly spend less. Whatever the number was, cut from that. Don't cut from a projected increase, just make it less. Cut it, and then, of course, the question you're all gonna ask is, where? Where do we get it from? Question here, the answer here is, I don't care. Cut it, and then figure it out. That's what people are looking for. They're not looking for you to spend more money, tax us more, bring in things like gambling. They really don't want it. Thank you.
And just a comment on that, I totally agree with you. The 80 million, I don't see how that can happen in this biennium anyway, because it's going to go out for people to put in bids on what they want, and then it's gonna go out for the towns to vote on if they want it. Only one town has, that was Salem, and they did that. But Salem isn't secure that they are going to get it, depending on what company gets the state believe, oh, yeah, you jumped to all the hoops and you did it, now what do you want it? Say, for example, let's do the one in Hudson. Okay? Town of Hudson will have to vote on it. The earliest they can vote on it is next March. So, I mean, now we're already, we're going to be in the end of the first biennium. So are we, first half of the biennium. So how is that, I mean, if that comes, it's gonna be in the second half of the biennium, if at all, and that's if it's even approved. Yeah, the Senate approved it, but the last I heard, there's probably, there's 30 votes short in the House to approving, because some people in the House like, hey, yeah, gambling's fine, but only if it's revenue neutral. In other words, let's use that money to cut the business taxes so we can get more businesses into the state. And other people want it to increase the spending, so...
One more comment. The only way that we'll ever get anywhere or improve or make it in the state is you gotta starve the beast. Cut the funds. No gambling, no more taxes. When you starve, you will find a way to survive. You're not starving it. You're getting what you want, you just keep taxing.
And my argument with you on that is the, in private enterprise, and I brought this up on the floor, when private companies have a problem with revenue, what do they do? They cut upper and middle management. You can't cut the workers. And somebody told me in the Department of Safety, for example, there are seven levels of management between the commissioner and the state trooper on the road. Yeah, little truck, come cut the troopers, cut that middle management. You know, and those kind of things can be, can be done. I mean, and that's all departments, not the safety. Let's do what private enterprise does. You know, get rid of the bureaucracy.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we're not gonna ever have what private enterprise does, Ralph. That'll never happen.
Anybody else?
The only thing I can say is I agree with what you're saying. Unfortunately, that's not what was done. I can tell you that there's also been increases in the business enterprise tax and the business profits tax in the House version of the budget. There's the increases in the cigarette tax that you talked about earlier, you know, 30 cents, and there's the increase in the gas tax. And all of that's going to hit, you know...
The poor.
The citizens of the state, unfortunately. And I don't see that, the way at least it was proposed, I haven't looked at the Senate bill on the gambling yet, but I don't believe that the way that the governor proposed to have one casino in the state makes a lot of sense to me. It's, the amount of money that you're gonna pay in expenses is gonna be off, you know, it's gonna be a revenue-neutral game. It's not gonna solve anything. The other thing is, there's a comment that I know that was made by the Finance Committee that talked about their decrease in their spending. Well, the way they decreased the spending was they refinanced the bonds that the state currently has, that ran, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 million in reduced spending. But I don't think that there is, or I haven't seen, a lot of appetite to decrease spending to the way you're talking about, Chris, and that's unfortunate.
Representative member, if you want to respond.
I do, but we'll let the Senator respond.
I just wanted to clarify something with Representative Byron. When you said increases in the business taxes, you meant in the projected revenue, not in the rates.
I'm sorry, in the...
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that. Just with respect to the gaming, I think the bill has been worked on for a number of years, and I think that the issues with respect to how well-regulated the facility will be, how well-vetted any potential owner would be, have really been addressed this time around. It will only end up in a community that, as you said, has a referendum and actually welcomes it. I do think it will create jobs, and I do think it will bring revenue into the state. It will certainly bring in the licensing fee, which is the initial cost, but there are other costs associated with upgrading a facility, which will create jobs in the construction field for that period of time, and then there'll be jobs to run the facility. You know, we started off the conversation talking about things that the cities and towns used to get and now don't. That was a cut. It was a significant cut. It was revenue sharing. There were cuts made to the retirement contributions that had been previously paid by the states. And there are people that believe a lot of those things should be restored, and every budget is about a balancing act. It's, you know, trying to determine what revenue you have, not necessarily looking for more, but determine what you have, predict as best you can, and then try to meet the needs of the people of the community. And whether it's repairing roads and bridges, providing services for the mentally ill, I mean, that's, that's this budgeting process, and as Ralph said, we're, we're well into it, but we've got a long ways to go before we make that balance and try to come up with something that's palatable and that best supports the interests of the citizens of the state and helps to grow business in the state as well.
Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, sir. I prepared a document that will hopefully help some of the people on the Board better understand the budget, because it's a big stack of documents about this big. I brought home a copy. But I found a way to describe it to my wife in a way that she, that it made sense. I said, count the number of people in your house, multiply by $385, and that's your increase in the tax bill over this biennium. It's very simple math. If you want better explanations than that, I can show you all of the ways in which the scary, scary things have been done, but do the math at home. The budget would get a benefit of $80 million if we vote for a casino. And I'd love to. Any of you who've seen me on Facebook or have talked to me personally know that I would love to go out on a Friday night and play in a big poker game at a casino. So I'm the first guy who wants to vote for it. The problem is, on the first day I was put in the House, I put my hand up, and I swore to uphold and defend the New Hampshire Constitution. That New Hampshire Constitution says that there'll be free and fair competition in the trades and industries, and it is inherent and an essential right to the people that they should be protected against monopolies and conspiracies which tend to hinder or destroy it. That's not me making that up. That's the Constitution, which means that any bill that comes to the House floor that says you get one casino in the state of New Hampshire, I have to vote against, even if they wanna put it in Litchfield, and it'll reduce my taxes to zero. I have to vote against it, because there's a constitutional prohibition against a monopoly, and this bill, unless it goes out and says anyone who can match the licensing requirements has a right to have one, creates a new monopoly, period. Now, I'm not the only one who feels that way, and the 30 votes they're worried about, they're more like 76 votes, because there's a whole bunch of people who say, we will not vote for it, no matter how much money is in it, unless they go out and fix the Constitution issues. If anybody would like a copy of that, feel free to ask me. I've also sent, of my, of my document explaining the budget, I've sent a copy to Jason and to the Board of Selectmen.
My issue is with, you know, it's funny, because George kinda dovetails with what Representative Lambert's talking about. I think sometimes government looks to fix things, and they go, they go out slaying dragons, you know? They go looking for a dragon to slay, and that's not representative government. Representative government is, is, is a government that's supposed, supposed to protect my liberty. We don't send you all there to go find things to do. If we allowed free-market principles to work, and it's kinda funny that George brought it up, but a casino, fine, why, why is our government in the middle of it? Because they want the money, to go spend the money. Because if they were free enterprise people, they'd say, whoever wants to build one, have at it, and you're on your own nickel, and whatever happens to you, if there's five that saturate the market and they can't stay afloat, four of them close, and so be it. That's the essence of free enterprise and liberty. But what I see is, I see a government at the moment that says, well, we'll let you have some of your money back, because we feel we'd rather spend it here or there, and not allow the private enterprise to provide. Now, there are certain basic things that government should provide, but I don't hear that, and that's where our money's going, right? So when you say cuts, I'm sorry, you're cutting what? Cutting payments back to another government. It's not cuts back to the people. I don't ever see less taxes or less burden upon myself, and of course, folks are gonna hear, well, I want that, and I appreciate the fact that I have constituents and we all have our hand out, but quite honestly, don't feed the bears. When you feed the bears, the bears come back, right? It's crap. So rather than spend money in my town locally, to my school district, so my kids have a great education, right? My money is taken and spread a mile wide for everyone else's benefit, everyone else but mine and my family. I have fruits of my productive labor, they should stay within my home, and I don't want my representatives to feel that they have to go slay a dragon on my behalf or on their own interest. Your representatives, you're not out there to take upon yourselves whatever interest peaks you. So please don't feel, don't feel that you have to do that. And I know, and I'm a Soucy, we've not ever really spent any time together, but maybe I should, and have you understand that to represent Litchfield, when you look at who lives in this town, we're pretty, pretty strong conservatives in this town. We vote a certain way, and I'd appreciate at times you understand that and not always vote maybe what the other five wards of Manchester would have you do, because in my opinion, Manchester are a bunch of takers, living off the providers. So I'd appreciate more than a one-fifth understanding based upon how much we provide, because we provide a lot out of this town.
Jason, no more, no, not a question? No question?
Actually, I have a comment about his statement, if I might.
Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure it's questions. I...
I, I
No, I don't know. It's, it's not a question. It's, it's, uh, I need to make sure my representatives understand how we feel in our town, because we don't get this offered.
Okay. I appreciate it. Um, Mr. Lambert, and if anybody else wants to respond, and we do have a question.
The good senator from Manchester might know that in Manchester, they license a billiard table at twenty-five dollars a year. And that's how they control who can have a billiards table. Comes from the Saloon Act. Many, many years ago, actually, the billiard tables were described as being in saloons when the bill was, when the law was originally passed. But at twenty-five dollars, that's the current fee. If the same approach was taken to slot machines and poker tables and roulette games and everything, we wouldn't need to come up with an exclusive licensing arrangement and would have sufficient revenue to solve the problem. And then anybody who wanted to could do it. And there might be revenue, we wouldn't have a monopoly problem. That's not the approach we've taken. We've taken a different approach, which is the government will go out and raise eighty million dollars, because we can solve a whole bunch of problems. You're right. We didn't, in this particular legislature, take the approach of what money do we need? We've actually taken quite the opposite approach. And we funded the current budget for one dollar for Medicare costs. Not one dollar per person. Not one dollar percent. There's no magical figure. Look at the column. It's one dollar. Who thinks we can run the Medicare projects in New Hampshire for one dollar? Nobody. Oh, but wait a second, we're gonna get some federal money. Uh, because our budget assumes we're gonna take federal money for a whole bunch of things that we may or may not get. And if we don't, we're gonna have to go back to those five hundred million dollars worth of funds over there to sort and patch the holes on a budget that's already gonna cost you three hundred and eighty-five dollars more than you're spending now in taxes. If I were you, I'd be really, really, really scared of what's happening in terms of the state budget. Because with, that doesn't, that three hundred and eighty-five dollar number doesn't include any increases in your county taxes or your local property taxes from down here. Sorry to get off on a rant. But you know, this is my chair for six years. I rant from here.
That was my question.
I was just gonna say, look, I'm here this evening to hear about your concerns. And I intend to be in Litchfield regularly. Litchfield is part of Senate District Eighteen. I didn't design the redistricting. Um, and I feel that I represent everyone who lives in this district, whether they be from Manchester or from the town of Litchfield. So please rest assured. Call me, email me, let me know what you're thinking, what your concerns are. If you're troubled by any vote I take, please let me know.
Well, I get animated, so just realize I'm just an animated gag.
That's understandable, right?
My bark's my horse, my bite.
And, and just a quickie, you said, yeah, you have constituents. You're a constituent for Litchfield. Unfortunately, we have a lot of other constituents that voted this last time they sat. Gimme.
Right.
And that's the problem.
Dan, any question? Brian Cockens, who's from January, Litchfield School District. Can I just, uh, first like to thank folks for coming out. I know you're all busy people and have
I've had this week off.
On your plate, so. Number one, thank you, not only to our state folks, but also our municipal folks. Um, let you know that, I mean, I would love to be, to be knowing that, uh, the state portion of our support for education would be going up. Um, just to let you know, I would be thrilled to hear that it's just not going down. Because in, in the end, uh, the cost of educate isn't changing. It's going up slowly. Population in Litchfield in most places is going down slowly. The costs don't always go down at the same rate as, as, as the student population. But, um, just wanted to let you know, Ralph, if you're being on the Education Committee, uh, you're probably aware that there have been some pretty significant cuts already at Department of Education. There are days that we try to figure who we're supposed to call now, because that position doesn't, doesn't exist anymore. Um, but the, the biggest fear really is, um, you know, to what extent are the, the revenues that used to come to help the freight costs, catastrophic aid, um, CTE tuition, CTE transportation. I mean, I know, actually, I've really been impressed. I was able to attend the, uh, the legislative sessions with both the House and the Senate leaders and was, uh, very impressed with how knowledgeable they were. In general, the representatives are with the issues with education. They know the history, they know the trends. Um, so thank you for your time. I know you're aware, the more that you can do to stabilize at the state level, then the more I can try and work with folks to try and do the best that we can with what we have in, in the town. So that stability is, is very helpful. And, uh, very appreciative of the correction to the, over the, the funding piece. We just got our last transfer payment, so, uh, Mr. Martin will be showing a change in the, in the expected bottom line at the state. So thank you very much for your work on that.
Just to set off on the Education Committee, and, yeah, we put in a bill this year, Representative Ladd did, to cap CAT aid at no less than eighty percent. Because right now it's like sixty-seven percent. Um, that got killed. The budget has less than that. I think they're trying to keep it level, but, which is sixty-seven percent. We noted the problem, and we raised that issue on our committee. And it passed as our committee, and, and, but then it got killed. The, I, if I remember, I think it passed, the Finance Committee killed it. We also, on the other money you get from adequacy aid, that's totally based on population. So the less kids you have, the less money you get. Okay? Um, which is the way it's supposed to do. Um, but then with the state coming in, the, by the way, the Department of Education coming in, not the state, they made this up themselves, with Common Core. Which if you look at what's happening all across the country, there are more and more states saying, "No way. We don't want it." Uh, but it's the playing a game, the way I look at it, and a lot of us up on the Education Committee, since the Department of Ed has started at the federal level, how is our education in this country gone downhill? They have yet to come up with a program that worked. I mean, "No Child Left Behind" was a joke, and I said that to a comment I made before I was even on the school board. I said, "This isn't, it'll never work." And that was when, the first year it started. I said, "It's impossible." But yet they kept going and going, and then they found out, "Well, it's not gonna work, so let's change it, and let's get a waiver." And the waiver means Common Core, which isn't going to work either. So I mean, it'd be nice if we could have our own education system, because no town's not going to give the best education to their children. I mean, and we don't need the federal government, or in a lot of cases, even the state telling us how to educate our kids. And my argument to them all the time is when we have to do these programs. I said, "No, why don't we just find the state or even the country that has the best math and copy their curriculum? We don't have to make our own." You know? Yeah, I mean, and those kinds of things. I mean, Singapore math is, is, but people, a lot of places are going, "Let's do Singapore math." Or even Montessori education, but that works with some people and not others. So that's, so that's issues there. But we, the thing is, it's, we seem to get bureaucracy going that eats up a lot of money. I believe it's seventy-five percent of the Department of Ed at the state level is funded by the Fed. So they wanna keep that federal money coming, because those are their positions and their bureaucracy. And you know how much bureaucracy you have to go through. We tried to get a handle on that two years ago, and we couldn't. I mean, all the paperwork and whatnot, that ends up probably, nobody having, looks like. We worked on it. We're working, tried to get the CAT aid, but maybe it can still be fixed somehow, because
The numbers I've got show that it's going, everything's going down. The exception of catastrophic aid.
Any best guesses as to the magnitude of, of that decrease?
Yeah.
Well, CAT aid, you just said was staying.
I, I didn't ask you to ensure that I would drive home passive, because I would drive home and forth.
We're still in process. There's still more to go. There's still, there's still hope that the Senate version will be a bit different. Um, CAT aid and building aid obviously have taken big hits recently. And those are, those are truly, um, a significant part of, of any school budget. Um, but I wondered if there were other issues, any other legislative issues that had come. Obviously, funding being, being the primary one, but
I had a few things playing a little bit, but quite honestly, um, the stability of the funding, you know, which, which would ensure that I can move forward with some plans with the district in a, in a way that allows me to know that this money spent would be able to be sustained. We have some issues in, in our budget in terms of trying to, to level out costs of things. Um, you know, with our technology budget, which is a significant piece. I'd like to be to the point where we're not leasing, but actually purchasing and flatten that out, decide, what's the technology that we need? What does it cost? Annualize it so you get a flat cost of ownership. And then, you know, so you can have that level of predictability. But if the state's unpredictable, then that, of course, gets magnitude by the time it gets down to, to our level. And I do know that you know that, and I know you appreciate it. Uh, and anything you can do would, would certainly be a benefit to the town and, and to the students. Uh, I did wanna also give a personal thanks to Frank. I've been asking Frank if we could get a, a group together and get you guys into the school at some point in time. And I've been remiss in not getting back to him, because my plate has been a little bit full. So my apologies on that. Please be assured that it's, it's, uh, me not being able to find a date that works and get back to Frank on that. So thank you for your time.
I'll give you, by the way, a copy of what I have here, so you can
Yeah, in the past, what we tried to do is like, hey, maybe having two meetings a year, one school in, in one town. So this is the town one, and sometime in the future, we can get a school two.
My name is Bob Curtis, President of Litchfield. I have interest to full disclosure, I'm a member of the planning board of Litchfield. Um, but I'm here tonight as a private citizen myself, on behalf of my wife. Um, we're both senior citizens. And we are very concerned about House Bill one thirty-five, which I believe is gonna come up to the US Senate for a vote. And, um, as we understand it, it is basically taking away our right to defend ourselves in any place where we're legally allowed to be. And we think it is just a bad bill. It makes no common sense to us. Criminals typically will target those who are weak, disabled and the elderly. And what this, what this bill does is it, it takes away our right to defend ourselves and makes us run away. Now, I'm sixty-four years old. My wife's seventy-five. We don't run very far, very fast. I don't think a young mother with, uh, a couple of kids in a, with a stroller is gonna run very far or very fast. So to put this in the form of a question, um, and I guess, um, I'll direct this to the Senate at this point, because it's coming up to the Senate. Um, do you understand, really understand that this bill makes no common sense for the citizens of New Hampshire? And will you vote against it when it comes up for in the Senate?
I am very familiar with the legislation. A lot of people have talked about it. Um, eh, as I understand it, the state lived by what was called the castle doctrine for many years, meaning your home is your castle, and you can always use force if someone tries to, um, enter your home. Two years ago, legislation, which is this, this bill, it was Senate Bill eighty-eight at the time, changed that to what the current law is. And House Bill one thirty-five would bring it back to what had been the castle doctrine that many people thought had worked for as long as it had been in place. Um, I can tell you that I have talked to more people that are opposed to the legislation um, than support it. Uh, I can tell you I certainly believe in Second Amendment rights. I can't tell you at this very moment that I will absolutely oppose it, although that's what I am leaning towards at this point. Uh, the hearing is gonna be held, um, in the Judiciary Committee on which I serve. Ten to listen very carefully to all the testimony that's provided. But at this point, I'm leaning towards voting against the bill.
You have to make, make a comment on that. The, the bill that HB one thirty-five does, it goes back to the nineteen seventy-seven law. In nineteen eighty, a doctor and his wife was leaving a restaurant in downtown Boston. The doctor was accosted by somebody wanting to rob him. The doctor, who had a license to carry, took out his gun and shot him. The doctor was arrested, because Massachusetts. That raised such an outcry even in Massachusetts. And somebody asked the question, "Can that happen in New Hampshire?" And the answer was yes, due to the nineteen seventy-seven law. So in nineteen eighty-two, we amended the New Hampshire Constitution that says you have the right to use deadly force to protect yourself, your property, and the state. It doesn't say where. So the bill we did last year to fix it, made it constitutional. The nineteen seventy-seven law, which is going back to, to my point, was made unconstitutional by the nineteen eighty-two Constitutional Amendment to the New Hampshire Constitution, two A. Which, which specifically addressed that issue of that person, the doctor in, in Boston that got arrested for not running. You know, because they have a castle doctrine. So, yeah, it, I don't, it's, you uphold the Constitution, you gotta vote for it. The nineteen seventy-seven law, which it goes back to, to me, is unconstitutional. And it was, if it was me, I'm not gonna run. I'm just gonna say the Constitution says I don't have to. Yeah, I don't care what the law says.
I, I think, I voted against, uh, House Bill one thirty-five. And I voted against it, um, for the simple reason that I don't believe that we should empower prosecutors to second guess what you could do, couldn't do, or whatever, in cases of extreme emergency. And I think that's what this would do. It would create a situation where a prosecutor could now sit there and say, "Well, I think, Bob, you could have, you could have gotten out of there, and you really didn't have the right to do that." But they don't know. And, um, that's my concern about it. And I, I do not believe that that's the right thing to do.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to present this to you. And, uh, thank you for your time.
I had the, I had the pleasure of discussing the, um, passage of HB one thirty-five today with a fellow representative from Nashville, who managed to not be there for the vote. Um, but the House took it. And she says, "Well, I have to decide how to, how to vote on this." And I said, "Well, we've already voted on it." And we passed one thirty-five. And she said, "Well, what does that mean?" And I said, "Well..." I said, "You know the knee surgery you're thinking about having, and the fact that you're gonna be walking around having a hard time? That means if we leave your office at two o'clock in the morning, because we were working late on the computer, and somebody threatens us, I have to run. And I have to leave you there." Um, and she goes, "Well, that's no good." And I said, "Well..." And it's not actually quite that simple. But that's a simple explanation as to the castle doctrine, or, um, the, the bill that we're repealing right now says that your castle is, starts at the Vermont border, and it ends over at the ocean. And it goes from Massachusetts
To Canada.
To Canada. And it says anywhere in the state where you have a right to be, you have the right to defend yourself. If one thirty-five passes the Senate, we go back to, from your front door to your back door, you have the right to defend yourself. But if somebody challenges you, and you're not in your house, when you go to make a decision as to whether or not you try to defend yourself, you better figure out whether or not you are ready to be arrested when you're done saving your life, or the life of someone else. That's what that means. You get all the fancy language, all you want to. But the question right now is if we repeal one thirty-five, is that decision gonna be made by a jury? So we can't let that happen. But oh, the House tried. It's off in the Senate.
All new question.
Can I touch on this? Okay. Yeah, it's real brief. I, I'm not sure why anyone would support our, it would seem to me that this supports the criminal and not the individual. You know, the guy who's on the street. I, George, you, you might have thought that was simplistic, but, but honestly, I thought it was quite appropriate. Is, it's kinda like, you know, if a bear's chasing you, you only gotta run faster than the next guy.
That's right.
It's kinda the same. You know, the one, the ones we've been feeding, we wonder why they're chasing us. But, um, my, I guess my question is this, why? Because I wasn't, I wasn't in the House to hear it. But what, what kind of rationale was there presented that said, "Your house is your only castle"? Done?
I think the biggest, uh, presentation that was made was, "This is the way it used to be, so we should go back to it." That's what I heard.
It was the law for over thirty years. Prior to that, and people believed that it was an issue.
So the three hundred So, the three hundred years before that, we can make the same argument, well, that's the way it used to be, it used to be, and it was right.
Are you stating the argument?
Okay, new topic. Jason, you have a question?
New topic. Well, you know, we've covered the sort of mild-mannered guns, taxes, so, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to liven it up a little bit here. You know, one of the other things that's really important, sitting where we are, you know, when the board's here and, you know, what I wrestle with are the basic functions of running government. And, you know, we are only allowed to do those things that we are given the authority to do from the legislature. So, you know, I, when I compiled the list, and this is also to sort of inform those who are watching as well, you know, I gave you some really passionate, exciting issues that as they come across your plate, you know, I want to make sure they at least tickle on a radar screen. House Bill 183, allowing earlier processing of absentee ballots. And the House Bill 269, expediting special town meetings for adequate education funding. I think you may know a little bit about that one, Representative Bohm. House Bill 297, which I think has been retained at the moment about management of trust funds and capital reserves, real good opportunity for us there to increase investment options. House Bill 522, we jumped through a whole bunch of hoops because this board tries to meet every other week, yet we pay bills and pay our employees every week. We've created this construct to get things signed that, but technically is that a meeting? So all this does is say, you're allowed to function as a government and pay your bills. The SB 172, catching up investment law to allow additional investment options other than certificates of deposit. I think that came out of the Senate.
It did, I was co-sponsor.
And I think that would be extremely helpful. HB 342, which I think you're going to see this week, Senator. You know, we, in its prior form, we had a concern, this dealt with New Hampshire retirement and potential eligibility. It has emerged from the House EDNA Committee with, with a requirement that employees, retiree employees be notified by the retirement system and the town of the limitation on their hours. So rather than, you know, I mean, we can spend many hours talking about the limitation on hours, but just that notification piece, the technical and extreme piece of that is, by forcing the town to do that as well, it creates a greater burden for us.
I think it's 364.
Three, oh, 364, sorry. That's right.
342 is the one that requires...
Reporting.
Oh, 342 is, sorry, 360, yeah, 342 is simply reporting. 364 is the...
Notification.
The notification. New Hampshire Retirement is in regular contact with their retirees. They have a burden to notify and a burden to track. When you add it to the towns as well, then it creates an additional paperwork burden for us.
I suppose, in terms of the tax system, let's just leave it alone for a while. It keeps on changing and we're continually responding to that. And we talk about downshifting. Those are costs that we acquire from the state level that we didn't plan for. It happens in big, by disciple and so on. I mean, I'm all for the town taking care of their side of the burden, that's not an issue, but we're not changing it.
So, part of the history of 342 was the fact, because I serve on the House EDNA Committee, was the idea that they wanted to limit the number of hours that a part-time retiree can work, from thirty-two down to twenty-four, which would have huge, huge impacts on towns like Litchfield. And it, the issue that you have is, I was able in the committee to at least drum up enough support to kill it. And what I did is was able to put into there a sunset clause, so it'll sunset in five years, but in that five-year period, the towns are responsible for reporting the work hours and things like that. So, I'm okay with that, get the data, that's fine. And then in five years, I think it's, it will die a natural death. The bigger issue that I have is House Bill 364, which is the one Jason was talking about that requires cities and towns, as well as schools, to notify any retirees of their obligations under the health plan. I was able to at least get through an amendment that was trying to create a safe harbor for the towns and stuff. And I put in a floor amendment on the House, on the House floor, to try and kill it and to make it a responsibility of the retirement system, only the retirement system, to notify on an annual basis all retirees of their obligations for work. And that was defeated by, I think, twenty-two votes on the House floor. So I would like to see this whole thing, if we could, in the Senate, die in, die in the Senate, or at least be amended in the Senate to my amendment, which was to say, make it a requirement that the retirement system, and they can do it as part of their normal communications with their retirees. It doesn't really cost the state anything more. And have that done so that we are able to take that onus off the towns. Because the situation is that if a town can't produce evidence that it has done that notification, the towns are now in legal jeopardy. And a retiree could say, the town of Litchfield, you never did an adequate notification to me, or you never notified me, and therefore I'm taking you to court for paying the retirement penalty that they have.
The problem with that...
That's being heard this week.
Yeah, the problem with that...
Yeah, I was going to testify on that, to be honest with you.
Right, and Frank had a good amendment. I even asked him a question on the floor on the amendment. But the problem what happens is, say with the part-time policeman, you don't know, the town does not know, what other towns are they working for? So it's easy for that part-time policeman to all of a sudden get more hours than he's supposed to a week. And it shouldn't be the town's responsibility, it's the employee and the union's responsibility. The town has no way of knowing what, if that policeman is working someplace else, part-time, you know, or anybody else, I mean...
It's a very legitimate concern. What was the origin was of the bill? Was there a specific reason or do we know?
The specific reason was originally that they wanted not just current employees of the town who are retirees of the system, they wanted even people coming in just for a job interview to be notified. That's how far it went.
What I mean is, did this come from the retirement system?
No, it actually came from some state representatives out of Manchester, as a matter of fact. Representative Sullivan, if I'm not mistaken, is the...
Yeah, I don't know if he's three, I know he's 342, the one that would have reduced the hours.
I know he's 342. I think he was involved in 364, Representative Goldie. But I'm not sure between the two of them. Actually, no, I apologize, I'm incorrect. I think it was Representative Copeland.
Oh, Tim Copeland from...
Yeah, from Stafford, Stratford, or whatever it is. Somewhere out to the coast.
That is very legitimate, because especially the smaller communities that staff, that have to staff or find themselves having to staff services with part-time help, that, and they may be employed in other towns on a full-time basis or other part-time basis. That is a very legitimate concern for the towns.
In the way it left the House, I worked on a, an amendment with Representative Moffett, which gives the town a safe harbor. But that town, that safe harbor against prosecution has never been challenged, obviously, in court. So I don't know whether it's effective or not. If it's not effective, then the towns could potentially be on the hook.
I do think the other bill though, House Bill 342 with the reporting requirement on part-time employment, actually makes good sense. I mean, we've been going back and forth the past few years as to whether or not converting full-time positions to part-time, not just the use of part-time positions, which towns and cities do right now, because you have regular part-time positions, but whether or not there's a long-term impact on the system of converting what had been full-time positions to now part-time positions. To the extent that's happening on a broad scale, what that's doing is, or what certain people believe it's doing, is driving up the unfunded liability portion on those that remain. So it looks like the cost of their retirement is driving up, it's just that if you were once dividing by ten thousand and you're now only dividing by nine, the rate on each individual person will increase if it's happening systemically. And I think that by at least tracking the data for five years, it'll settle that question one way or another. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but that debate seems to be going back and forth, and it would be good to make an informed decision with some real data. And it's something that the system doesn't currently track and really should.
If, if I could say, if the problem is the lack of income to the retirement system for people working part-time, if a town were to hire someone who was going to be making a contribution to the retirement system, if that person were not already in the retirement system, then you could solve the underlying problem by making sure that the town makes a contribution to the retirement system based on all of those hours, regardless of whether or not someone is already in the retirement system, and that problem solves itself with no study and no research. It has an upfront initial cost to the town of, they have to make the same retirement contribution for an employee who is in the system who's outside, but the end result is that the system is actually balanced to the same dollars.
Can I suggest you scroll down in your Constitution to 28A?
Yeah, right.
Sorry, but that would be considered a new unfunded mandate. In fact, in one of the legal challenges that went to courts, they specifically cited that example as being a likely change in the terms of the program. See, I would tend to agree with you. If that's the answer, I'd probably, you know, I could probably, I could probably live with that. But it has been specifically flagged as a likely 28A issue, so we might have a problem with that.
This lawsuit, this current lawsuit's going through the system on it right now.
But the town of Litchfield is guilty. We were 100% guilty of this. We actually did it down at schools. We had people who, we decided we were not going to pay the healthcare, we're not going to pay a bunch of other retirement expenses. So we went out and we took a guy who was working for us full-time, and we go, let him retire, have a big retirement party. And by the way, the week after, he's back to working for the town, except for we don't pay the retirement contribution or the healthcare cost. We took the savings. We happily did it. The problem is now we have to fund the damn bill. So what we need to do is make sure that if we're going to take responsibility, we take our responsibility. We're not doing it.
George, it's not that, it's the opposite. For example, somebody retires on their own, then after a couple of years, they said, let me start working part-time. So if they work X more hours a week, say thirty-two hours, then they need to participate back into the retirement system. And they don't want to because they're going to lose their retirement and stop being a full-time employee.
But they're not accruing any benefits by working less than thirty-two.
It's one of the things that has to happen often, and, you know, and I think everybody has an opinion, and obviously...
Well, I can tell you that in the House, there was a proposal made to put a study group together to look at this whole thing. And that was defeated in committee.
All right, we are, we have actually approached and passed the top of the hour, but I do want to just, one more short question, if there is a short question? And then if not, we'll put the delegation for any closing comments or...
I got a really short one.
What's that?
A really short one for Ralph, as on the Education Committee.
Go ahead.
Common Core, we spent ninety thousand dollars in the proposed budget that passed. We're going to spend ninety thousand dollars in our operating budget.
I read this week that the Secretary of Education, is that her title? Said that it's voluntary, it's not mandated, that we do Common Core.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, we have chosen here in town to do this with no mandate, it's just we're doing it.
Right.
So we have incurred the unfunded liability.
Yeah. Basically, I, there were two bills passed, I mean, two bills that got to the floor last session to not do Common Core. It passed the House, one passed the House, because we combined them, and the Senate killed it. That was two years ago, okay? Well, yeah, because for some reason, the House thinks that the Department of Ed works for us, the Senate thinks they work for the Department of Ed, at least those members two years ago on the Senate Education Committee, yeah. But, yeah, I mean, because, yeah, it's got to cost a lot of money. And supposedly, it's just voluntary, but voluntary with, you know, sometimes how things get to be voluntary with Department of Ed, yeah. Then you don't get this.
Okay. Any closing comments from the delegation?
Just thank you so much, and I hope we do this again soon, and keep informed about the issues.
And hopefully, maybe after June, when the budget maybe is finalized, or we might be working this summer, yeah.
I just want to say, no matter if we agree with you or not, thank you for what you do up there, because I know it's certainly not easy and there's a lot of give and take in it. And it's important to try to do things by, in a bipartisan manner. And I appreciate personally all of your efforts in representing us, and especially coming down tonight. Thank you for, as a taxpayer.
Yeah, and thank you on that, yeah, for telling, appreciate your time. We hope to have this again soon.
Yeah, good. I even skipped on one meeting that I was supposed to be on.
Yeah, so for the folks that are following on TV, we're going to go quiet for a few minutes, we're going to restructure and set our device and stuff and get back, pick up the media at the top of our agenda.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Frank, thank you for your time. Welcome back to the board.
Good to see you.
You're always good once they go to... Senator, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll shake your hand in just a second, I was just...
Sir?
I get nervous. There was one on full screen. Makes me nervous. I was in the Navy a long time.
What did we determine it was? 364?
Yeah.
We're invested in her.
I know the School Board Association is just going to justify it to the same point.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's a kind of a catch-22.
I think George wants to stay. You know.
Sounds good, thanks a lot. Yep. There's plenty of going on here. Brett, how you doing?
Hey, I'll get you.
How's it going? Good to see you.
I'll see you around the State House. Actually, I'll probably see you Wednesday. You're on EDNA. Probably going to try and test it out.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, my mother. This is a big deal. It's a freshman. Okay.
We left off the second...
We may not realize, a small problem. We've rescinded it all.
Oh, and I distributed my explanation of the budget to Jason, so you guys can all have a copy of some of the simplified highlights. I wrote it for my friends and for my wife. It compares the state's behavior to things that we would do in our household if we wanted to, you know, be irresponsible.
One of those for planning boards.
Sure you put the planning board away.
Frank Byron, you're simply Frank Byron. That was good, good. No, but it dovetail, right? That's what I was going to say. You haven't spoken before for one night. What's that? We've got a long meeting ahead of us.
We do?
Absolutely.
You know the sound on, do you, while I'm singing?
Yeah, you sound great.
Yeah, it was me, thanks a lot. I appreciate that.
We call you the singing selectman. I love that.
All right. Let's get back in meeting mode here. Okay. We good? Everybody all set here? All right, welcome back to the Board of Selectments meeting for the March, for, yeah, March, April eighth. We just came out of a session with the delegates from Concord. It was a good, good session. So first up on our agenda is review of items for consent. There are ten items in there, obviously.
Chairman, I'll move that we, the board approved the items for consent.
Okay, a motion to approve, seconded by Mrs. Jewitt. Do you have any comments or discussion?
Just to point out to the board that Joel Capelson is already a full member of the planning board, and Mike Capriglio is an alternate member who'll be going to a full membership of the board, so I just wanted to point that out to folks.
And he's taken whose position in the full?
He's taking Leon Berry's position. Leon is not...
Sure you put the planning board away.
You haven't spoken before for one night.
All right, let's get fired up. We've got a long meeting ahead of us.
We do?
Absolutely. You know the sound on, do you, while I'm singing?
Yeah, you sound great.
Yeah, it was me, thanks a lot. I appreciate that.
We call you the singing selectman. About that.
All right. Let's get back in meeting mode here. Okay. We good? Everybody all set here? All right, welcome back to the Board of Selectments meeting for the March, for, yeah, March, April 8th. We just came out of a session with the delegates from Concord. It was a good, good session. So first up on our agenda is review of items for consent. There are 10 items in there, obviously.
Chairman, I'll move that we, the board approved the items for consent.
Okay, a motion to approve, seconded by Mrs. Jewitt. Do you have any comments or discussion?
Just to point out to the board that Joel Capelson is already a full member of the planning board, and Mike Capriglio is an alternate member who will be going to a full membership of the board, so I just wanted to point that out to folks.
And he's taking whose position in the full?
He's taking Leon Berry's position. Leon is not renewing his full membership position in the planning board.
Okay. Well, on behalf of the board and the town, I'd like to say thank you to Leon for his services to the planning board. He'd be greatly missed, and hopefully he doesn't, you know, hopefully he helps out in the future. So thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0-0. Next up is request for items for other business. I didn't see any heads up about anything, so I'm not hearing anything, we'll move on. Next is public input. Anybody wishing to speak to the board or the community, please step forward, please state your name, address.
Chris Pascucci, 12 Colonial.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, and again, thanks to the state reps that came, and I think we learned something, and we got some information, and we learned that taxes are going to continue to go up. But bringing it back locally here, we had an election last month. I'm sure we all have our opinions, you guys have your opinions as to the results of that election, but in my opinion, the voters were telling us, you guys, at a minimum to slow down with proposing new and additional spending. Many times, we've heard this board say things such as, the community wants this stuff. We've also heard, we're just given the level of service that the voters demand and expect. We've also heard community members approach us, you know, via email, personal phone calls, asking for certain programs, services, or items. We recently heard at the last deliberative that a survey was sent out, and the results showed that the community wants commercial development in Litchfield. On Tuesday, March 12th, the survey was conducted, and it's the survey that really counts. The survey said no to more spending, and if the failed warrants does not say that loud and clear enough, the operating budget failed by such a small dollar amount that should prove that the voters cannot afford and/or are not willing to pay for anything more or additional. So where do we go from here? We noticed it's been normal practice from this board. You take requests and you listen to the wish lists from individual community members or groups that ask for stuff, and then you get it on the ballot for them. Some on this board believe and have said that growth in town is inevitable. The definition of growth is more and larger government and higher taxes. I personally don't believe that growth is inevitable. I believe it's a chosen path, and the voters chose, at least at this election, and I think also mostly at last election, to not travel the path of growth. Having said that, there's no doubt that people will still continue to approach you, again via email, private conversations, asking for more growth in government, more stuff. Usually, or sometimes, many times, you guys create warrants to bring to the voter, to move forward with those proposals, that mean more spending, and many times, if not most, you recommend those spending proposals to the voters for the ballot. In other words, you get the spending train in motion that can only be stopped if enough voters come out on Election Day to tell you to no, and to stop that spending train. I believe this election gave all of us a very clear picture as to the will of the Litchfield voters. The survey conducted on Election Day said no to more spending, no to commercial growth, and no to higher taxes. The economy is in very poor shape. We, reasonable adults would accurately conclude that, given current federal policies, especially the economic strain Obamacare is going to cause, both on town but more so on our school budget, with all the surcharges, fees and fines and Cadillac surcharges, we have fiscal mess in Concord, as we just saw, which are more downshifting, and more spending, and high unemployment numbers, and inflation, and the economy, I believe, will not see any improvement for years to come. I have a suggestion about possibly trying something different. When people come to you guys asking for new programs, more stuff, bigger government, instead of doing all the legwork, making it easy for them by creating those warrants, how about directing those people on how to create their own petition warrant articles? You could help them out, let them do it, let them get the petitions going, let them do the legwork, let them sell it to the community. Let them convince each taxpayer why more programs are better, how growing government and increased property taxes would be a good thing for the Litchfield homeowners. The voters told you last month, that went to the election, that they want to curb spending a little. I'd appreciate if you could listen to their wishes, especially moving through the year and into the next budget cycle. One last point. I understand Mr. Byron was approached by someone willing to donate money to conduct a sewer system study. It's the same study that the voters rejected by a three-to-one margin last month. Mr. Byron, I certainly appreciate that you said it cannot be done this year due to the no means no law. However, it should not be done next year either, even with donated monies, without first asking the voters again. I mean, they said no. Of course, any person or group in town can do whatever study they wish with their own money, but the voters said no to the town conducting this study for various reasons. It could be they don't want the result of that study, or they don't want to spend the money. And finally, I'm wondering, do we have, does this board have a policy on the accepting and approving of donations, and if so, where can I find it?
It's governed under state law.
It's governed under state law. Does it say anything about accepting donations in an anonymous fashion?
I don't believe so. I believe it just specifically speaks to how a town either has to or has the ability to accept donations.
I'm going to dig that one up, and I would like to respectfully ask if this board could someday, on a near-future agenda item, speak about that. People I know, including myself, have a problem with the acceptance of donations that come under the name anonymous. I think if we all thought outside the box a little bit, we could see where potential problems could come from accepting donations with no name or no group attached to them. So if there's any way we could have, you guys can discuss that, make that an agenda item. I would like to elaborate a little bit more at that time, and I know other people would like to offer their input and opinion. We're not saying, you know, stop accepting donations. The people I've spoken with, and I also believe that any donation should come with a name attached to it, similar to how an election sign has to have the name of who paid for it. So I think it's a fair, accurate, and reasonable request to have that discussion, and I'm hoping that you guys could engage in that discussion real soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grerett?
Good evening, Jason Grerett, 11 Perry Court. I wasn't going to, I didn't realize he was going to bring that up, but I don't have a problem with donations as long as it's for, like, you know, charity, but if it's, but if it impacts the services that we provide, if a public or if a private individual is going to donate to further something that could possibly increase my taxes at some point, I want to know who's giving money and why. Why are they choosing to want to donate to a warrant article that failed? To me, that just brings up all kinds of flags. You know, it's okay to donate to the giving tree, or, you know, I want $10,000 to go to, you know, the account that pays for, you know, the, yeah, the welfare folks, right, or whatnot, but it's certainly different when it comes to the other things. You know, Chris said a lot of things I wanted to talk about tonight, but I'll keep it brief. I think, you know, again, this goes to some of the comments I made when the other folks that represent us were here, in that we shouldn't be, you know, searching for things to fix. And so what happens is, at least for one year, the voters said no. I mean, a no means no is good for one year, it can't bind any further legislative body, because the voters can change their mind at some point, but there are things that come up during the year that you have to spend money on, okay? Things fail. You know, I know there's going to be a conversation tonight about purchasing police cars and a skid steer, things that were in the proposed budget that failed, and we may need them or not, but they're not catastrophic failures that have got to happen. The voters, in my opinion, said, you all presented the budget, here's what we want to do, and the voters said, nope. Maybe they said no to one thing, maybe they said no to all of it, maybe they just said no because they wanted to say no. That's where their pencil fell, right? But at least for one year, acknowledge it. The voters told you, no, don't do that. You might need them, but it's not catastrophic yet. If a car fails and it cannot be repaired, you've got to do what you've got to do, right? You've got to replace your car, but they're not. They've got some miles on them, they still roll along, but look at those things in that budget, right? Because there's a Supreme Court decision that says you guys can do whatever you want to the bottom line, flat out, right? And we acknowledge that. You're well within your rights legally to spend to the bottom line, whatever it is you choose, but we ask that you respect what the voter said to you. The voter said, no, we don't agree that there should be new police cars, we don't agree there should be a new skid steer. We hear that you said, that you do, but unless it's catastrophic, please don't do it, right? Because that's what the voter said. And you represent the voters and work, as Mr. Lemire likes to say, on our behalf. Well, that is on our behalf. We said no, please acknowledge that. Okay, so, and the last thing, real quick, is, I'm not going to be here tonight for when you all finish, but it really would, a few minutes on the agenda to have public input on the back end too, because sometimes there's things we'd like to comment on that we'd have to wait two weeks, it's not germane, sometimes people can't follow at home, you know, if someone's here to make comments on something you said a week ago, it's hard to follow, you know, so I understand that. And then, secondly, I hear you guys doing the consent calendar a lot, but at home, when you do that, if I don't have access or can't find it, I don't know what you're talking about. And so it would be nice if you could just let us know what is on the consent calendar. You know, you just, you don't have to go through them as what they are necessarily, but just read what they are and say, here's what the consent calendar is, and this is what we're voting on this evening, just so folks at home know what it is.
That's fair.
Thank you.
That's my bet, I do it once in a while, don't do it all the time consistently, we'll change that.
Thank you.
All right, any other public input? Hearing done, moving on to the agenda. Let's see, Administrator's Report. First up is the default budget.
What, there's a default, yeah, no. What, and, you know, I think I've had this draft up probably since the week or so after the vote. I came in after, after the vote and went back through and said, okay, we have a new bottom line. And my approach to this was on several fronts. The budget lost, yes. The budget was defeated by nine votes, which was, you know, I chose to look at it as a different, a different sort of guidance in some ways than if the budget lost by 300 votes. So to that end, you know, I started, the first thing I did is I went back through and said, remember, when we calculate the default budget, we used a series of mathematical rules to get there. So, you know, some of those individual lines, we arrived at mathematically by applying the rules, but they had no connection to the reality, good or bad necessarily, of where we needed to go in the coming year. So I said, well, let's go back first and look, understand that some of these numbers that were all our really good faith numbers that we put together using the best information we had in September, it's now March. So in some cases, there were places where we overestimated, underestimated, and as we would normally do during the year, you make some of those adjustments on the fly. I mean, in some cases, we know, hey, this is running high, this is running low, this is where an offset is. So I tried to tighten those numbers. The next thing I went back to try to do is going forward with, you know, how, to try to fund as many of those things as we possibly could that were in a budget that was recommended by this board and recommended by the Budget Committee. And, you know, where could we get to with that? I also didn't want to necessarily sort of jump off the deep end in terms of finding where does $70,000 come from. You know, I mean, we have, we identified any number of serious issues over the course of the year. So what you'll find through all of these is we kind of nipped and tucked our way through a variety of lines, and you'll notice, if you look at the detail on some of these lines, yes, some of the lines went up. I'm not making new budget proposals, the new places where things went up, it's because that's the reality of where we are now. I'm not going to put my head in the sand and pretend that if I told you it was 2,500 and the reality is we're trending toward 5,000, it's not fair to call it 2,500. So, you know, I did try to make the numbers, as I looked through them, as fair as possible. But the end result on all of this is I have an overall budget that calculates out at the $4,974,847 that was approved as the default budget.
Do you want to walk us through?
Is your preference for me to go through every item I changed, or how do you, what, how do you want to proceed with this?
Well, I mean, I walked through it several times, there's only, there's a couple of areas that we took considerable action either way, right?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe we'll just highlight those, and then if there's any specifics from the board, like I said, it's been out there, everyone should have reviewed it by now and followed the questions through if there were any questions, but when I'm looking at this, the furthest right-hand column is the budget that was Budget Committee approved, Selectment approved.
Right.
That went to the voters.
Mm-hmm.
The default revisited is, it's the original default budget that's been rebalanced to deal with the priorities and the concerns of each individual department.
Mm-hmm.
The bottom line budgeting, so.
Right, based on what we now know in March, as opposed to what we tried to calculate in December.
Right. So I'm just walking down, trying to see if there was, I mean, police, police has a reduction, almost 30,000.
Yeah, I mean, that was the, you know, the largest probably cut back, cut overall towards that was police.
Now, fire margins is reduced also, but I thought the 276, 799 was what we got from an estimate from Pennechuck. Did they reduce the, did they reduce the bill?
No, we, remember, we had kind of a rolling estimate there of we were given a ballpark number.
Increase.
You know, and then, you know, the feeling on the Budget Committee was that number was too high, so we backed it back further, you know, and you'll see my note there is, I got my, I got my bill from Pennechuck showing me my monthly payments for my next, for my 12 payments of 2013. Already?
Yeah. And what is the number?
The number is, the number calculates out to 265,020.
Okay. Now, is there any concerns, I mean, it looks like road maintenance has taken, well, I think you've already factored in the winter and the costs we already have.
I have tried, yeah, and what I didn't put, this does not reflect putting anything back in from the, you know, potential FEMA reimbursement that we're going to get for part of this. You know, we recalibrated slightly the work and overtime numbers, we pulled a little bit out of the catch base and clean outs, so Jack felt we were comfortable there. Salt purchases, I put some back there. You know, I'm still not comfortable that that's, you know, will take us entirely through the winter. You know, knowing we're getting some back will help there. I'll tell you, if you're playing along in the color version, you'll see that is red in my chart, unlike all of the other changes I made that were beige. The reason behind that was when I, you know, I went through the budget department by department, kind of, you know, page by page with it, and said, I can recalculate this, I can adjust this, we can move this out, we can move that out. By the time I got to the end, I had overshot my target. And so instead of going back and adding, adding pieces back in, you know, I made the adjustments feeling like, yeah, that's probably where we can be right now, but I knew I was still running short in highway, so I took that whole balance and put it there. That's sort of my catch-up space.
What is that, in regards to salt purchases, what is that account at right now?
Probably pretty close to that, let me see where we are.
So pretty close to the 57?
It's probably going to be pretty, I want to say it's like at 55, but I just got a reimbursement in that I can, that goes towards that.
Now, I have a question, because I'm not sure how to deal with this. So normally, we get FEMA reimbursement for major storms, but usually it's a year after, so it goes back into the general fund. The fact that we're going to get reimbursed for a storm that happened in this budget cycle, what happens to the funds? Do we... You know, I'm still not comfortable that that's, you know, will take us entirely through the winter. You know, knowing we're getting some back will help there. I'll tell you, if you're playing along in the color version, you'll see that, that is red in my chart, unlike all of the other changes I made that were beige. The reason behind that was when I, you know, I went through the budget department by department, kind of, you know, page by page with it, and said, like, I can recalculate this, I can adjust this, we can move this out, we can move that out. By the time I got to the end, I had overshot my target. And so instead of going back and adding, adding pieces back in, you know, I made the, I made the adjustments feeling like, yeah, that's probably where we can be right now. But I knew I was still running short in highway, so I took that whole balance and put it there. That's sort of my catch-up space.
What is that, in regards to salt purchases, what is that account at right now?
Um, probably pretty close to that. Let me see where we are.
So pretty close to the 57?
It's probably going to be pretty, I want to say it's like at 55, but I just got a reimbursement in that I can, that goes towards that.
Now, I have a question, because I'm not sure how to deal with this. So normally, we get FEMA reimbursement for major storms, but usually it's a year after, so it goes back into the general fund. The fact that we're going to get reimbursed for a storm that happened in this budget cycle, what happens to the funds? Do we reapply it back to the account that got taken out? Or do we have to put it?
I don't believe you can do that, right?
Um, if there were, if they were extraordinary costs, you can put them back in the account, in the account from which they came. I mean, the past couple of years, we haven't been able to do that because they're...
See, the auditors will only allow, I believe, some of the only things that can go back into are insurance settlements. You know, when you get an insurance reimbursement, that's why I hesitate, because FEMA is, the FEMA reimbursement is kind of like an insurance reimbursement. So it would, I would like to think that, because those were unanticipated expenditures that the town had to make due to a catastrophic incident.
There are parts of it that, that are potentially eligible. Obviously, we triggered a lot more overtime.
Overtime.
Okay, so overtime, we know was an unusual expense, we'd be able to reimburse.
Yeah.
Some material likely. The portions that I attribute to vehicle, probably not. You know, my administrative time? You bought my time, you know, anyway. So those go back as revenue. And, but there are some pieces of it that you should be able to offset added cost.
Right, because of the unanticipated nature of the expenditure due to a catastrophic event. But you also have a fund that's sitting on the side there.
No, I know we do. And I, and I'm assuming we haven't tapped it yet, and we're not planning on tapping it until the next winter, I would assume.
No, I mean...
Or if something happens.
Right, I mean, there's a lot of time between now and then. I know it's out there.
What's the size of the fund, by the way?
Uh, 20,000. I, I know that fund is out there. I mean, I guess what I'd say is...
I'm not worried about the bottom. I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about us making, meeting our, you know, our needs here. It's with regards to the cost that we know we're going to incur. It goes back to, what do we do with that money, right? Do we bring it in to the general fund? Or can we offset some of these costs so that we're not looking at a, you know, larger number next year?
Right.
Or not withdraw on a 20 and then have to put it back in? Can we use that fund to put it back in the 20 without going into tax base again?
Of course, again, that'd be an auditor issue, right? What they would allow, allow us to do, sometimes it's not our, our decision to make.
And I think in terms, just in terms of that 20, I mean, the way we've talked about those funds when we set them up was that we would know it's out there. But, you know, ideally, you would try to cover it from wherever you are within the operating budget. And, you know, any transfer would be end of the year, when the dust is settling, you know, it would be one more exercise that we'd add in as we look at our encumbrance list of do we have to transfer any in? But we wouldn't spend it just because it's there.
Right, no, exactly.
And that's why I didn't want to count that when I did this budget.
No, and I was curious, because I looked at the last expense sheet, and it looked like we were getting close to the number that UX already forecasted or readjusted to, and realizing that we're not, shouldn't be buying any more salt this year. I'm assuming the salt shit is...
We should be, we should, we're fine now for...
So we have enough for the first part of the month of the winter? Assuming there's no more winter.
Yeah, right.
I just probably changed ourselves.
I know, I'm not even going to...
Okay. Next, next one there, Jason? Next highlighted one or bigger one? Big one, I guess? I mean, I think the police, the fire and roads were the most of the significant shifts were, shifts were put in to deal with projects and things that were already planned and started or costs that were incurred, you know, things are, things are needed or whatever.
Yeah, and when you look at the, when you look at the fire budget, you look at individual lines, you'll see a lot of them have changed from previous. If you remember, the, the Budget Committee just decided, hey, we're going to take $20,000 off the bottom line.
Right.
And so, which was fine, except then we never...
We never explained the line.
We didn't go out and allocate. We said, well, we'll wait to budget time. So when Chief and I did this exercise, we did both exercises at once. We took the 20 and then said, with that gone, where else is there space to put a little bit more back in the mix?
So this, this budget does represent the $20,000 that was reduced by the Budget Committee approved by the board and just rebalanced out the max that fit the default back into it?
Right, exactly. So it was the 20 plus a little bit more then.
Yeah, all right, yeah, I see. Of course, my, my other obvious question is, the department heads have all worked at this, they are all comfortable with it. I haven't heard anything otherwise.
Yeah, I sat down that first week with everybody and said, here's what I'm looking at. What do you have? Am I missing something? Is there something I don't know? You know, and people were pretty good at coming back with suggestions of this may be a good place, or I can slow this down, or, you know, well, you know, highway, highway was a good example. You know, and, you know, Jack mentioned, hey, based on where we are with the catch base and cleaning schedule, if you need to pull some money back, you could pull some money back there. Just, you know.
The, the only thing that I see, like, with highway, I noticed that, on the wages, you pulled some wages from him? That, 10,000 from him? Knowing that the condition of the roads, because of the winter that we have, you, was he okay with that?
He was okay with that, because we went through the numbers and that, that allows us to have the current rate that we have of hours for both Jack and Les. And then we usually bring somebody on through the summer as well. And I was able to include all of those with a little bit of space to spare for the unknown with that. So I think we're okay with that.
And Jack's not planning on reducing any of the services to the summertime, like the lawnmoring of Albuquerque and all that?
No, no, I mean, we tried to, every, in every place we looked, we looked first for where can we do things where we can tighten a belt without being dramatic? You know, the goal here is not to, is to not penalize the community or say, see, you know, we didn't pass the budget, so therefore, you know, this is going to go wayside.
At least, the difference in two budgets will allow us to maintain our assets and our employees and our services without too much outside visibility of what's going on. You know, so. Okay. Any question, any other questions from the board? So I believe we need to make a motion to accept the budget, right?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I personally would like to go through some of them on, like, say for instance, while, I'm just happening to be on this one page, so I'm saying it, like, $2,377 for extra clerical support. Can they survive without that? This is on the executive.
Isn't the, isn't that all of our minutakers?
Yes, that's, that's a reduction. I reduced that by 2377.
Yeah, that's reduced, yeah.
I realize that. But how, that's what I said, is that going to, if you were asking for 8,377, then you went to 6,000, how, what is that going to entail by cutting that out? Is that planning? Like, in other words, people have vacations and all, and we have to make them do it.
I am not recommending anything in any of these lines that I think is not achievable at this point. I made that adjustment based on what our experience had been to date. And part of the reason for that is that, you know, that clerical support number, we pulled a bunch of departments together. That used to be separate, right? You know, so some of those projections in individual departments were higher and lower than realities turned out to be. You know, our minutaker group, while I can, you know, always like to give a little relief, you know, I had to bring a little bit of that back. You know, we have one person on staff who is now working for us full-time. So, you know, occasionally, it's going to hit overtime, but occasionally, it's going to be juggling the rest of her schedule during the week. So I can make some of that up. You may not have her smiling face at the window one afternoon, but, yeah. So I'm pretty comfortable we can stretch to get there without throwing something overboard.
I wonder if you realize vacations and all, and sick time. They've all got those things in there. I'm sure they're going to take their vacations. I don't care. I hope they don't take the sick time, but...
Debbie is not taking any vacation. She has committed to every...
Oh, no. That's all right, Debbie. You don't need it, really.
So, Pat, is your concern that it's, it's too low?
I'm, I'm wondering, when they took out that much, are we going to have enough help? I mean, I'm just thinking, say the two people took out vacations in the same week, you're not going to hire anybody else. In other words, I realize that you just shift people around, everybody does everybody else's job, right?
Yeah, we just, we make things work.
That's what they do, which was very unusual. But I just wanted to make sure, because some of these people are entitled to a month's vacation because of the long time they've been here. They wouldn't take a month at one time, I realize.
But that line is specific to the minutakers.
Yeah.
So with that said, you know, speaking on the overtime end of it, I know with that, I think we, I see that you cut out of the police budget for the overtime, correct? And they're, they're the only one you cut the overtime out of?
Uh, at this point...
Only place really is a lot of overtime.
At this point, I think that was. Let me double check and see. That's the only place I did right now, because I was comfortable with where the trends were. You know, and I, I saw that we could, we could make up that space on where the trends were.
See, I think the reality of it is, is that we'll have to look at, you know, as we do every month, we have to do a mid-year check-in and make sure that we still are balanced right with regards to the allocations, but...
And the department heads are...
Yeah, I mean, they're empowered to...
On board with this.
Right, and they're empowered to spend to the bottom line, so, you know.
Right.
Their bottom line has been set. We've worked with them to kind of level out their priorities as far as where they thought those funds are supposed to be applied, because of the projects they're going to do on behalf of the citizens and I think...
I guess the question would be, you know, if we're taking overtime from people, is it, we could take from each department and reallocate that money somewhere?
Um, yeah, I guess...
I just don't know if the over, you know, if the overtime's justified, no issue.
See, I guess I'm not, I guess I want to just say, yeah.
Just before we get off on a tangent, overtime is not, first of all, overtime is not expected, right? Overtime is a kid that, oh crap, we've got some problems, we've got to cover shifts.
Right, right, it should be justified.
So it's not a given. So we, we budgeted based on sort of trends in history. The department heads realize that we should not be using overtime as a covering of shifts. They've got to look at other ways to do it. So, I mean, if we reduce the over, if we reduce the overtime line and put it someplace else in their budget, it may in fact still go back to overtime if that's what they need.
Right, because they, yeah, but if it's justified, right? No issues if it's justified, but...
At the end of the day, it comes down to, each individual department's have a job to get done. They have a community service. If they keep servicing with the regular hours and have to go into overtime, in that mind, it's probably justified. If overtime's being used in lieu of some other way, you know, that's up to the department to figure that out, and it's up to us to ask the questions when we see the increased overtime line, right?
And, and I guess the other thing to note at this point is, you know, because of the numbers we were looking at, I, I really tried to base sort of on where we were with trends or known or an expectation of something that we thought that hadn't quite worked out that way by March. Which was different than sort of asking, I need you to cut this line. My sense is that, you know, you know, we'll probably take, you know, we always kind of look informally where we are each time, because there are some assumptions woven in here, good, bad, and otherwise, that we probably do need to take a more formal look, you know, come September and say, hey, where are we on this? Because we go into the last quarter. And again, that'll inform, hey, did we make the right choices here? And what are we doing to wrap up the year? And how does that inform next year?
Deb, was there a second? Because I've lost track.
No, my motion's...
Motion was made. There's still no second. So, motion fails without a lack of second. So, where do we go from here? Because we have to, we have to approve the budget, otherwise we can't do anything. Is there, is there another suggestion on how to go about approving the budget? For Byron? Any thoughts?
You're not approving the budget. You're basically taking and redistributing the funds.
Well, I mean, but we have to accept the bottom line, right?
No.
No, we already...
They already have.
So we don't do, I'm on the impression we have to vote, vote the changes that Jason's recommending.
If you want to transfer funds, you have to vote the changes, yes.
Okay. So the fact that we had no second, where do we go from here?
I'll try one more time. I'll move that we accept the budget as presented.
Is everybody waiting because they have questions? If so, why don't we just start at the beginning and go through it as quickly as we can if there's any question?
We've, we've opened the questions up for all the lines, and no one else has a question.
That's what I said. I don't know. There must be a reason.
You had started asking questions, Mrs. Stewart, and I...
I did, yeah.
Before I say anything, I was giving you the opportunity to ask your question.
So I'm going to second it for now opening for discussion. Any discussion on the budget as presented by Mr. Hoke and already discussed by the board?
I had a question on town reports. I know it went way down, which I agree, that probably that's...
Which account is that in? Is that administrative?
Town meeting, 413030.
What number is that?
413030.
413030.
I know, I mean, it was important, is, but are we going to have enough? I noticed that probably they're not putting out a stack that high out there purposely. That's good psychology. But, I mean, I just wondered, we were cut down a lot, but I noticed a couple of people tonight picking them up. And I thought, wow, you know, it's kind of late now, but... Can you tell us that?
Yeah, I could, I can tell you that the number reflects what we actually paid, because we agreed that we were going to print 500 books. We still have two, three cases in the back.
And there, how many about in the box? 25 or so?
25, I think, 25.
I think it's 25.
So, yeah, I mean, we've been gradually, we've been gradually putting them out. You know, and again, I mean, you know, we've ratcheted it down. My sense is I can't drop it much more than where we are at 500. And the test just is whether 500 works. You know, and so far, okay, okay. I mean, we've gotten through our surge time. You know, and every one of those beautiful orange books is $7.50 for us to make.
That's what I said. Well, I'm all in favor of not, I mean, I remember telling you people, I used to go to the dump the day after the town meeting and pick up 25 or 30 of them and bring them back to town hall. Because, and in those days, we were paying even more than what we pay now, so I'm all in favor.
I mean, I'll tell you that the town report is getting accessed online consistently.
Yeah, I think that's a big thing.
It's there, it's online. We made it available on DVD also for folks who want to take a tangible item with them. But it is available online and, you know, I think, you know, the question come next year as we do our budget send, do we want to reduce it from 500 to something less? I think we need to see where we're at with, with our supply come middle of the year anyway, when we start budget season, but, you know, the other thing is, I wonder if we can do on-demand printing?
And there's no chance of our health or dental insurance jumping up in the middle of the year, right?
Oh, it's already jumping, but those have been, those have been woven, those are already woven in.
It's not going to jump again, that's what I meant.
No, no, the rate changes July 1. I had the rates, plugged them in, so if you, you'll see a bunch of changes there. It's all reflected. And again, the, the other thing that I went back and looked at on those numbers is, you know, in some cases, you pick up some space, sometimes you lose some space as people change plans. So, you know, again, I retweaked those numbers based on where people were as of April 1 for enrollments.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Any other items, Mrs. Stewart? Mr. Bork? Mr. Lemire? Mr. Byron?
The chairman will call the question.
Okay, the question's been called. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Stained? Motion carries 500. Let's, let's make sure that the last meeting in May, we do a budget review, see where we're laying out. We're supposed to do it every end of the month, anyway, let's make sure it's in the May calendar, towards the end.
That's what I was just going to say. We are going to do, like, department heads and all that, to make sure they realize that this is their budget now.
Yep, they're aware, they're aware of the budget.
Jason, will let them know?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, and they've been working with me since March on this. And, you know, and again, most of these things weren't radical changes that were turning their department upside down. And now that you've approved how those are allocated, I can plug them in this week to the budget reports. You know, everybody has been kind of flying blind. They can see how much they spent, but they don't have any context. You know, everybody has been kind of flying blind, they can see how much they spent, but they don't have any context, so those will be put in, into the system now till.
Now our reports will look a little more.
Your reports will be somewhat more informative.
Okay.
Good.
All right, next up is Cruiser in Skidstair.
All right, I'm gonna start on the Skidsteer end of this, um, actually, I'll just sort of, big picture on both of these things. Uh, we went through a lot of conversation both here and Budget Committee in the fall on replacing the Skidsteer and replacing three of the police cruisers. Um, the default budget retained the amounts that had been, come out of both of the, uh, four of those that came out recommended by both Budget Committee and the Selectmen. Um, let me, to recap on the Skidsteer, um, we, uh, we proposed this in December, the concern with the oh-seven Skidsteer was it was not reliably operational, it was a key piece of equipment for running the department. Uh, Dave Mellon had recommended considering the replacement, that replacement cost was about thirty-four thousand dollars. We were advised that our current equipment had a trade-in value of eight thousand dollars. Uh, at the time, we had applied to New Hampshire the Beautiful for a grant of up to five thousand. Uh, when the grant was finalized, we, we received twenty-five hundred of that, um, rather than reopen the budget, uh, you chose at the end of the year to encumber the twenty-five hundred dollar difference. Um, so, um, with all of the dust settling on all of those things, we ended up with seventy-five hundred dollars in this year's budget towards that. So, sort of the, the, what we estimated as year one of three-year plan. Um, recall too, that by the time we got down to borrowing that amount of money, that in most case, we were trying to avoid vendor financing, which carries a real high interest rate. Uh, that by itself was not, you know, the bank by itself is probably, will not do, you know, a lease purchase on, you know, a net balance of twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, so we had intended to blend it with, with, uh, the cruiser package when we actually financed it. Just in, uh, um, some more context on why we came to that decision last year for replacing it. In two thousand twelve, we had spent about twenty-five hundred dollars on repairs on the equipment, um, Dave has been coaxing it along since the end of last year. Uh, we're trying to avoid spending further repairing, repair funds on a piece of equipment that's slated to go out of service. We do know that we have a coupling repair that if we retain the vehicle, we would need to do, which would, and the estimate, estimated cost of that's about twenty-eight hundred dollars. Uh, if the vehicle were kept, you know, longer, we'd be concerned about hitting that point where it's, ends up not being usable for an extended period of time, rather than being out of service a couple of days here and there. Um, renting equipment to cover it, um, to cover its absence while being fixed, about five hundred dollars per week. Uh, if the equipment remained in use another year, the trade-in value would likely drop from about eight thousand to closer to six thousand. Um, we also have tires in stock that would fit the replacement vehicle, we haven't put them on yet. Um, if vehicle's not replaced, we'd put them on, so we'd at least lose, you know, a year's worth of service on them. So, the, these were all of the things that you considered back in September.
Yep.
Um, and then through the, uh, Budget Committee discussion to led, to lead to that. Um, so.
So, all, all in, if we do not, if we take no action on this Skidsteer, the estimated costs to make it reliable, at least functional, is how much again?
Um.
Total?
Twenty-eight.
The known is twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I know, okay, but there's also, there's also a tune-up that's due.
Right.
Which is, I think, two fifty, three hundred dollars.
Yeah, which we would, yeah.
We already have the tires, you said.
And we have tires, which we would need to put it onto this vehicle if we were keeping it much longer.
The cost of the tires on?
Uh, yeah, the, the set of tires is four thousand dollars.
So, we're looking at sixty-eight hundred bucks in repairs that we know about.
No, you're looking at twenty-eight hundred, you're looking at, and then about four thousand of lost value, two, two thousand on the use value of the tires, two thousand on the use, the trade.
The lost, yeah, the lost value is a concern, but that's, I'm really, I'm really concerned about what's gonna hit us this year if we do it, if we don't do it.
Can I talk to this?
Yeah.
I went down and I looked at the Skidsteer, and I also spoke to the staff at the facility. A couple of things I wanted to make the board aware of. I also ran a financial analysis on this, at least what I consider a financial analysis. The facility personnel described to me the Skidsteer as mechanically sound, with the exception of the bucket disconnect system. And the bucket disconnect system, if you look at it, is basically a mechanism that's used to connect the bucket to pick up goods or put on fork, uh, fork tines. To use, for example, picking up pallets and stuff like that. I asked the question, what else was wrong with the Skidsteer, and I was told that the Skidsteer is in perfect condition, does not have a problem other than that. And their feeling is that they're not sure whether it's a hydraulic system in the hydraulics of that disconnect mechanism that drops the pins, or whether it's an electrical, their feeling was that it was actually electrical, not hydraulic. The twenty-eight hundred dollars is what it would cost to replace this with a non-hydraulic manual system, which had been used for many years before that, and it worked perfectly fine. I was told that anything in back of the bucket, in other words, the whole unit, is perfectly fine and stout, and in fact, I was told that he has no problem using that system if we wanted to save money and go through the default without replacing it. The, um, cost of twenty-five hundred dollars to repair this includes actually, when I asked about that, because I was told that the cost to repair during the year was twenty-five hundred dollars. He disagreed with that and said that the cost was probably around fifteen hundred, give or take, and that he had expenses in the area of nine hundred dollars. Because there's two maintenances that are done, each at four hundred and fifty apiece. So, if you go through the numbers, what you're proposing is to spend, excuse me, uh, well, like, one other thing. There's also, um, suggestion made that the cost of the Skidsteer would drop from, or the worth of the Skidsteer would drop from eight thousand to six thousand, and that's another reason why we would want to replace the piece of equipment. The situation is that it may drop two thousand dollars, I have no way of knowing what the cost is, I'm not a Skidsteer aficionado who purchases them on the market, so I'll take the word for that it could drop two thousand dollars. I will also tell you that you surely, really should not consider that in your analysis, because it's the same with buying a new car. Soon as you drive it out of the parking lot, you end up having a decrease in the price. So, for all practical purposes, I consider the two thousand dollars as a wash between the depreciation of the existing Skidsteer, as well as what would happen if you bought a new one, uh, of its worth, so it's, it's a non, non-issue. So, if you look at the numbers that were on the website, the two thousand thirteen payments are gonna be, basically be, uh, eight thousand dollars residual, which is the value of the Skidsteer. Twenty-five hundred dollars in the grant. We encumbered twenty-five hundred dollars from two thousand and twelve, and we are going to be taking seventy-five hundred dollars, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but seventy-five hundred dollars out of the existing fiscal year thirteen budget. So, your out-of-pocket cost is gonna be the twenty-five hundred plus the seventy-five hundred for total cost of ten thousand dollars. That's what your two thousand thirteen cost is gonna be. And then going forward from there, your costs in fourteen and fifteen is gonna be seventy-one ninety-nine and sixty-nine seventy-four, and again, I picked these off of the, uh, the, uh, People's United, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken. So, overall, for a three-year period, you're gonna have something like ten thousand plus thirteen, twenty-three thousand dollars in out-of-pocket costs. If you put the twenty-eight hundred dollars into that, that's it. You can keep this thing going and you don't have a problem, that solves the issue with the Skidsteer. So, the point I'm getting to is, we don't need to replace the Skidsteer, we just need to fix it for the twenty-eight hundred dollars. If I was suggesting what we do is we put the tires, the new tires on to it, because the old tires are beat up and they need to be replaced, and try and run it for two years. And then at that point, we see where it is in terms of its maintenance costs or whatever, and make a decision there.
Okay. I only bring up one concern, and it's completely opposite of what the department head has said, so now I'm confused. So, I've been told by the department head and by the staff that having it, you know, working functionally the way it was, the automatic is the way to be efficient, and that it was unreliable, I understand what you're saying too. If the department head doesn't want it, then let's remove it from his budget and take it off the agenda. I think the department has spoken, has spoken to Frank and has indicated that they can live for another year or two. I, I would actually argue that another two years is probably stretching it, I think Dave is trying to do what Dave likes, always wants to do is save, which is a good thing. He's going to probably, what, he's expecting to delay maybe a year, I don't think he's expecting two years, unless he indicated.
He didn't say two years, I am making that as a suggestion, you try two years, because that's the, the useful life of the tires.
Yeah, so I, I think, I mean, it's fair.
And the only other point is, if you don't have a huge issue at the end of the, for second year, excuse me, at the end of this year, why not try and stretch it?
Absolutely, yeah, no, I, I, I agree, I, I think the only, the only, the only concern I have is that if it breaks down, we are paying for a rental to do the services, we gotta know the way around it, right?
Who services that, do we know?
Uh, Chapel.
Chapel does, yeah.
They're actually, I've worked with them, so I know they're pretty good, right?
Yeah, no.
Oh, yeah, they've been great to work with, it's simply, do you end up with something that can't be done on-site, you know, or needs to go away, but.
Yeah, there's been no issue, I mean, the, the, that, that hydraulic system has been looked at several different times, they are throwing their hands up in the air going, we're not really sure. So, taking out the automatic disconnect and putting in a manual system, you know, it's not what we paid for, it's not what the truck does, it's not what we are using it for, but if he's willing to do that, then.
The concern I asked was, if you take out the, I said, what are you gonna get on the new system, hydraulic and manual, he says hydraulic, he says, they assured me that this one would work, is what he said. And then I asked a question about the old one, he says, well, they assured me that one would work too, and.
Yeah.
It has, it's been problems over the years.
Right, I think, if you, if you think about what they're doing in that, in that row, in that garage, you know, they're, they're dropping the bucket, connecting up, forklifting it, you know, connecting to the fork and moving it. So, having to get out of the truck or having somebody there with them to pull that stuff, just makes things a little less efficient. But again, I, I step back, if the department head has said, he does not require, if, and he's not here to, he's not here to change his mind, and he's spoken to one of the board members and said, he doesn't need it, and I'm.
He didn't approach me, I approached him, I wanna make that.
Why is the department head.
And you're, you're comfortable, Frank, that the, the.
I can, I can only go based upon what I was told, and when I asked the question, I said, is there any other issue with this thing besides this bucket disconnect? He goes, no, he says it is a stout unit, and that's what he said to me.
And this was Dave Mullin.
It was the department head that you talked to, right?
Yeah, what's that?
Okay.
Yeah, it, I mean, again, Dave, Dave is always looking for ways to, uh.
Save money.
Save money and be efficient there.
Nothing wrong with them.
My only concern about going to a manual system would be that he's gonna be less efficient, and now he's gonna require somebody there with him at all times. Um, but I don't know how I, I don't know how you proceed with that, if the department head says he can live for two years, then he can live for two years.
He didn't say he could live for two years.
If he can live, live a year.
He said that he had no problem trying to run the unit because we're under the default budget over the year, that's what he said.
I thought also that we had to have new tires on that skid every year.
No, he said, he said they, he said they last about two years.
About every two years.
And he, and he showed, and I asked him the question, I said, so Dave, those tires that you have, he's got them stored stacked up.
Yeah.
And shrink wrapped. I said, if you got those tires, I said, if we get a new unit, I said, will they fit the new unit? He says, absolutely, he says they will fit a new unit, he says, I made sure of that, I said, okay.
Okay.
That sounds good.
I, I, I think it's, I think the issue's moot at this point, if the department head is advising a member of this board, he doesn't require it, then I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I, I realize the spot you're in, it's just, it's a little frustrating because we've heard two different, between what, we've heard different, we've heard a, a different request and a different.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was.
You know, and, 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 and I, I feel like now I've come to you misleading you, I'm not intentionally misleading you, what I've given you.
No, 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 no.
Result of my conversation with the same department head.
So, so, let's, let's, I, I don't suggest that you take and wipe this off the table, I wanna be clear on that.
I think your evidence proves we should wipe it off the table.
No.
Your calculation says it's, it's, it's a foolhard, it's, we shouldn't expend the money, and that we can get two more years out of it.
But I don't want the same situation to develop where we, we end up going down there, and I talk to him, he says, you know, you get one thing, and Jason talks and something different and everything else. I think that a couple of people from the board should go down and do the same thing I did, lay eyes on it and everything else.
And.
You told me you had been down there.
I had been down there many times, and I also defended the need for it at the Budget Committee, even with Mr. Pasquale's help, you know, looking at what the residual value of that was, and made sense, it made sense. Bottom line is, I saw him on Friday, when he informed me that you were down there, that you were, he asked the questions, I said, that's great.
He informed you that I was there.
No, that's just great, and he was concerned this wasn't gonna pass, so now I'm confused.
I'll be more than happy to go and talk to him, I mean, I.
This is terrible.
Well, they're dead, but.
I, I think we oughta defer action on this and, uh, pending any type, any type of.
I agree, I think we should.
Yeah, so, let's, let's, let's defer, let's defer the Skidsteer to Davey, that wants to come in front of the board and explain why he doesn't need it or does need it, so that we get it from the horses, from the department head's mouth.
The horse's mouth?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, he's the, he's the best person to come in and explain why it's important, right, or why it's not important.
Either, either, either that or somebody of the board, which I didn't do, I was gonna do, call Chapel and talk to Chapel and say, look, what's the deal with the.
Well, we talked to Chapel during the budget process, and, and, and I, I got, the message I got from Chapel, and I think even Chris may have talked to Chapel, but with regards to the hydraulics, it was just, no one really knew why it kept unfailing. And that we could repair it again, they're not sure, it sounded like that model that year was a problem, is what I got out of the whole conversation.
And that's exactly the information I got, is they have not been successful, and I think he said twice.
Yeah.
Trying to fix this thing.
Yeah, so.
And he said, the only fix that he could see, or at least it was given to him by Chapel, was a manual disconnect system.
I think it's important, we don't necessarily kill this, but certainly, there is not enough support. I mean, I would have trouble voting on it tonight, hearing this, because I have no information that would lead me to believe that there's a critical need to replace it at this point. And, and I think we need to defer action until, uh, when and if it is determined that there is a critical need for that, and I think that at that point, the board can resurrect it and then act accordingly.
If it was sitting there and it wasn't working, it was totally dead.
Well, that's one thing, right.
Then I would say we could.
No, and I think, you know, go back to what Jason was saying, and what we, when we went through this whole process in the budget, budget process, he came in front of the board and presented the need. We supported the need because we, we need to take care of our assets, right? We need to keep track of, this is a frontline vehicle in that, in that facility, and if it's not there, it does create challenges for him. So, we supported it, evidence supported at the time, if it's, if, if he's now rethinking his thoughts because he wants to ensure that, well, if he wants to, you know, do something different, that's, that's definitely his prerogative as the department head.
My, my, my point, I just wanna make, is he said, yeah, if we need to stretch it to do the default, we could do that.
Yeah, but Dave, Dave is also the same person who, with, who didn't put in his payroll every week to save money and took it in his head, so, I, I, I understand where Dave's coming from, and I a hundred percent support everything he does down there, he's, he's an awesome employee and has always been, and he's always looking out for that bottom line. He does everything he can from doing the work himself and not being compensated correctly when he's working the work, so, I, I get that. But I, I, you know, like I said, I've spoken to him through the whole process, the whole budget process, I know Jason has spoken to him recently again, he's reconfirmed to, to Jason. When I spoke to him on Friday, it sounded like he was concerned it wasn't gonna pass, so, you know, wasn't gonna get our, our backing and our approval, and I said, if you need it, we need to deal with it. Based on the evidence that I had, you need it, but if he's telling you, he can stretch it to another year, then we defer it to another year. But, so, again, I think we just should defer action right now. Okay.
Until there is a clear need.
Let me, let me ask this then, we need to move, let's def, like I said, let's defer it.
Right.
I know, Frank, you've been down there, Kevin, if you wanna walk, go down and talk to him one-on-one and see what his thoughts are around it and share with the board, that's fine. I would like him, if this is gonna come back in front of the board again, I would like him here at the meeting to justify it, okay? Um, he's the best person in the position to talk about how that affects their workflow and, you know, their ability to service, what they're gonna service, so. Cause if he can't move product out of there, he's stuck, cause then he's in fire, fire violations, cause his truck's gonna be compact, if he can't get.
Well, one way or another, there's gotta be.
Right, we gotta rent, we gotta rent shop.
Okay, there has to be something.
Well, we have to rent it, we're renting it at a thousand bucks a week.
We'll do what we have to do.
Right, no, agreed, agreed, all right. So, we're just gonna, we're gonna defer it, I don't think we need a motion to defer it, right? We're just gonna defer it. All right, so the other half of the story, or the other half of this request is the, is the, uh, police cruisers. So, just to back up when you're a little, when you set it up originally, this board, uh, when sat down with the, the, the police chief and the lieutenant, when they presented their needs and their case. Supported going in, going for cruisers based on the buying behavior we did three, three or four years earlier. based on the buying behavior we did three, three or four years earlier. Um, during budget process, we had a very healthy, lengthy discussion about, you know, what is the life expectancy of a cruiser, what is not the life expectancy of the cruiser? Um, during all of that, um, the town has a metric of ninety thousand miles on a frontline cruiser as being, that's its life, that's its shelf life. Anywhere around that potentially creates issues. Um, that's the metric we've been working towards for years, as I understand it. I haven't been here for years, but that's the metric we've been using. Um, the budget committee, uh, agreed on the need for two cruisers and approved two cruisers. During our resetting of our budget, after we got a lot of feedback from the budget committee, we took a look at our priorities and we worked the numbers with regards to the budget committee's approval number, and we were able to, um, move the priority of that to three cruisers, meaning we believe at the time that three cruisers is the right number. Four is probably not, based on the, the run rate we got on the cruisers and what the, what the behavior has been. We approved three cruisers in the budget. The default budget, or the budget we're now operating under has been, took all those priorities and, and still has the, the, the funding for three cruisers in it. So this is the history of it, because I want to make sure that we realize that we went forward with three cruisers. And the budget committee approved the three cruisers, um, when we, they went and we voted the budget.
Okay, but the budget failed.
No, no, I, yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, the budget committee, the budget committee and the board understood the priority, the need and the priority. So I just wanted to make sure we're clear that, that we didn't throw it back in there. It's not that case. The, the, the need hasn't changed, right? The reality of it is, is you have all the data in front of you. And Jason, you want to walk through the, the data again? But you've all probably looked at it and should have looked at it.
Um, I mean, what we, I mean, again, we looked at the, uh, sorry, I, my page is displaying strangely here. It tells me this.
If I could interject one more thing too. Um, the vent, so Ford, who is the vendor of, of choice, will stop manufacturing this year's cruiser. It will not take any more orders in, I think, a week or two? I think it's two weeks.
Uh, one week.
Not the Crown Vic, the, the, they don't sell the Crown Vic anymore.
Right, the Interceptor, I mean.
Through April thirteenth.
Incepting the utility. So the same two vehicles, the two platforms we've looked at, the platform we've decided, they're not taking any new orders for two thousand and thirteen. We would have to delay anything if we don't place the order until.
But a lot of vendors have them on the.
The vendors we've talked, they can't get them.
Will have them on the lot.
Not according to the vendors we've been talking to. So, yeah, I'm, I'm with you too, I'm going. But I don't know if you've looked around lately, but you'll see these cruisers everywhere now.
A lot, a lot of vendors won't have them on the lots because a lot of people with towns have been buying them.
Like crazy.
Oh, yes, I know. We just, we're able to get four.
Leonardary just bought seventeen.
Yeah. Northwood bought four.
Yeah, and it's like, so there you go. So I'm not, and I'm not saying it's the reason to rush through this. I'm just saying that we have a sunset, tonight's our only meeting. If we decide not to do anything, we will be deferring this for a period of time. I mean, until.
There were none in last year's budget.
There was one in last year's budget.
Vehicles?
Yeah.
Twenty twelve, police cruiser.
No, actually, that's incorrect. No. There were, there were none. This, that's been the, well, no, okay, let, let me rephrase that. There was, there was a, there was a third of four. Because remember, we had been on a three-year, a three-year lease for four vehicles? So, um, you know, so is that, so this being the end of that.
So the line was funded in twenty twelve.
There was sufficient funds in that, or the funds that were in the budget last year, where the funds required to pay the, the least cost on three vehicles.
Okay. Then, right, so it was in, it was in last year's budget.
I don't want people to think that there's nothing in the budget that's being added in.
Okay, so what, the money for leasing was in last year's budget?
Correct.
Right, and leasing for us, it seems to be the right mode, just because it allows us to be consistently.
A lot of municipalities are doing it.
Um, so Jason, I don't know if you want to walk through the status of the cars today? Because we do have a now point in time. Everything else was all projected when we were going through the discussion.
Um, sure. I, you know, we, uh, that, that lease had four vehicles in it. Um, three of them were equipped relatively similarly. Those have been kind of the frontline cars. Um, when we dropped replacing the fourth car, it was Car Six, which is the car that has been mainly used as a supervisor vehicle. Um, you know, we, uh, and because it is not equipped like the others, it doesn't get the mileage. So when you look at the mileage to date on it, um, you know, we're, we're at fifty thousand miles now. So, um, you know, we're not at or near that ninety that, um, that we would argue to take it out of rotation, um, and move into a detail vehicle. Car Three had, as of April second, had ninety-three thousand miles on it. Uh, round numbers, Car Four, eighty-eight thousand, Car Five, seventy-one thousand. Um, the, a couple of notes on this, uh, we've put in just under a thousand dollars of, um, expense on repairs for Car Three since January. Uh, Car Four was just a hundred and forty of routine maintenance. Car Five, thirteen hundred thirty-six dollars, axle brakes, fuel pump, routine maintenance. Uh, Car Six, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Uh, Car Five broke down on March twenty-first on Albuquerque Avenue, leaving the officer stranded for more than an hour. Uh, Car Five's cage, um, in the fall, had completely failed, allowing, um, access to the firearm secure space. That's been repaired. Um, you know, we're looking at a need to, because of the age of the materials, if that car's retained, uh, replacing that in full cage. Interior is in poor condition. The driver's seat is past point of repair and needs to be replaced. Um, note, note that while we're keeping it, Car Six also has a continuous problem keeping a charge. Maybe battery backup needs to be routinely jumped. On the day of the Wilson's fire, department had requested additional officers to respond. Car Six wouldn't start and needed to be jump-started. Um, I bring some of these up because, um, coming off of the lease, those cars are not under warranty. Uh, so we would expect the repair costs to escalate dramatically over what we've seen over the previous years. And one of the advantages of having your frontline main use vehicles all in that first couple of years is that with the warranty, extended warranty, your repair costs, your unexpected are low.
Uh, just the issue around the cage, just so folks know. The cages that are in these cars have been around for ten years, so the plastics are starting to deteriorate. There is some, you know, ten-year-old rust going on. They're safe and we do have to fix it, but just note that's not, it's not a new cage for the car. We actually trans, we actually moved those cages from previous cars into those cars.
Yeah, and, and I think one of the things that goes into this, I mean, that's part of the reason why you kind of have the double whammy now, is the vehicle models change. So even if some of the fit-up stuff fit, much of it wouldn't. Second part of it is, we've been through several cycles of vehicle life on this fit-up, uh, stuff. Uh, it's really showing its age. I mean, in, in, you know, what we've looked at is when you, the, the fit-up on top of the vehicle stuff, uh, reasonable to expect two of those three-year cycles. That's kind of what we would target and budget for. Uh, and the majority of that, that should last you two cycles. Um, I wouldn't count on a lot of it lasting more than two cycles.
Well, you're, the vehicles too, the newer vehicles are, are totally redesigned. So not many, not much of the old equipment is going to fit in there. We found, I, I know that for a fact.
Right.
One other question, have they, um, now, these prices are for the interceptors, right?
Yeah.
Were there any?
It's the utility interceptor though, it's not the interceptor.
All of them?
Mm-hmm.
SUV?
They're not, those are not, those are crossovers, they're not SUVs.
Wow.
Make sure you use that right, crossover.
They're crossovers.
Okay. But they look like.
They look like small.
All right. So I mean, the average person seeing it going down the street.
Yeah, 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 no, I hear you. But it's built in the same frame, it's the same all-wheel drive, it's in the interceptor, same motor, same weight, same everything.
Right, because we just, we just got one of those.
Because we got in a, we got in a discussion around, you know, gas mileage versus what it was.
Because these are six.
They're all six.
Right, they went down to six-cylinder.
Yeah.
Was, was there any pricing done on either the Chevy Caprice or the, the George Charger?
Uh.
Police, police package vehicle?
There was some done earlier on, but there's a reliance to Ford, because we've had good luck with Ford. We've got good vendors and they're happy with the equipment.
So I guess my question, are all these cars Ford?
Yeah.
They're all Ford. So looking at what I see here, I wouldn't say they've been a reliable car.
Well, actually, they have.
They have been, they only started breaking down now.
For the, um.
Yeah, that's the challenge.
The, the Crown Vic has been a very reliable car for police.
And I think overall.
They take a beating. It, it's the age. I think, you know, when you get that much mileage on, for the most part, that, that was a preferred car for most departments.
Yeah, and I think the, the, the wear and tear is now, it's time to show its, its colors now.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, the past has just been general maintenance stuff, you know, oil changes and things like that. Uh, we've, I think Car Three has had some other, some other issues, but that's been a car that's been run very hard, very hard all day long. Um, and the fact that we have four cars, we don't have four light cars, makes the balancing of the front lines a little difficult when you've got two to three cars running every day. So Car Six, as you said, can't be used for normal patrol, normal patrol today. And that's why it's such a low mileage and doesn't have the same issues. But it has been suffering electrical problem that just needs to get resolved.
Um, so, I mean, what this, again, what this looks at is the three vehicles, uh, as we had discussed before. Um, and again, and it's unfortunately, as we knew going in, it's higher this year because you have to fully outfit them in year one. Hopefully, three years out, you're not replacing the lion's share of that fit-up cost. You're buying a vehicle, but you're not buying the fit-up. Um, added on top of that as well is the camera systems, which have largely failed as well. Um, and so we had specified replacement of the camera systems. Uh, what we, uh, what we did look at here was, uh, a move to get all four cameras now. The camera systems are pretty, are portable to be removed fairly easily to go into a new vehicle. So, I mean, we're, part of what we're trying to do is we want, you know, we're keeping Car Six. We got to get some useful functional life out of Car Six. So the more that we can get it more used, used in a frontline way, the better off we'll be.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to rob pieces and parts from the other cruisers to put it in a car.
Yeah, if we can salvage enough from the other three to roll into it, to get us to that, you know, that level of service to use it, um, in a more active way, uh, that would be what is preferred. Um, you know, and then, uh, vehicles, New Hampshire state bid. Uh, setup is done in Massachusetts by MHQ, which has been the town's vendor for cruiser setup. They're familiar with the equipment. Department needs, able to handle all the communications, electronic setup. And the alternate vendor for setup would mean a separate additional vendor and delay for communication installs. Uh, Chief has been through the list several times to pare down and review with both vehicle vendor and setup vendor to make sure we're not listing duplicate items or, you know, one spec is including something that's going to be taken off during the fit-up stage. Um, so, uh, we set aside, uh, a budget number that was looked at was forty thousand five hundred dollars. Um, the breaking out in, uh, actual information, I have had two quotes on financing right now. Um, now bear in mind that the, including both the cruisers and the skid steer is part of that, because I asked for one package, so, but, you know. Um, obviously, if you don't go on one, the number will change. But, uh, the difference between these two, um, funders is about a thousand dollars for full cost between the two plans. So, you know, we, the, the main point is really just that, you know, this gives you the ballpark on the numbers. So by putting forty thousand five hundred towards, uh, the cruisers this year, um, that would give us in, um, round numbers between both of these, you'd be looking at two more annual payments of fifty-one thousand dollars in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen.
Which cars are you talking about retiring?
Three, four, five.
Wow. They'll get moved to detail, detailed cars will go in this trade.
Um, Car Three, which is over the ninety thousand. Car Four, which is probably at ninety thousand, maybe this week. And Car Five, which will be there in probably three months.
Why aren't we renewing the warranties on these cars? I know that, I just got a thing saying that could renew the warranty. You said without the, if the warranty is gone, their repair costs are much higher. So why aren't we renewing our warranty?
Because when they leave primary service, they get a lot less use. And when they're used as a detail vehicle, we actually make some more money off of them. So we have not been, I don't think we, I don't even know if they offer a renewal of police cruisers.
Not on serviced vehicles, they don't typically offer extended warranties.
You sure?
I, I, um, I won't say a hundred percent sure, but I don't believe they do.
Yeah, I don't remember ever buying anyone.
I was just thinking, if we could do that.
I mean, if we can, I mean, if we move them into detail, we probably should do that if, if, if that's an option, right? It doesn't change the fact that they're still, as a frontline vehicle, they need to be.
That would save us and buy only two, I was thinking. Because ninety thousand is not.
So who sets a ta, target mileage?
Uh, I mean, what, what we, what we looked at is, we looked at, um.
So I, I mean, I can tell you what.
Oh, you have probably what every.
Yeah, so we had gotten a lot of questions around that during the budget process. And we went around and asked different communities what they were doing and what was expected. And basically, um, just around our own surrounding communities, Hudson is eighty thousand. Leonardary places it every three years. Once the lease is over, they're gone, they're replaced. Mileage irrelevant, just replaced. Uh, Winham is on it every three, three-year or ninety thousand mile program.
How many miles?
Ninety thousand. Goffstown is a hundred and ten thousand. Merrimack is eighty to a hundred and ten. It depends on, it depends on its role and assignment, what the car is doing. Um, Salem apparently is every three years. And the state police had indicated to us that they replace theirs every three or a hundred and thousand, hundred, a hundred and five thousand miles.
And I could tell you the county replaces them that, uh, goes a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Where was that?
The county, the county of Hillsborough.
Really?
Hillsborough County.
In looking, if you, if you follow any of the, um, if you, unfortunately, you had to read a lot of industry rags about it and stuff like that, I mean, cruisers are typically in that ninety, two hundred thousand dollar, hundred thousand mile range. Because it's not just about the run, the actual physical miles, it's about the run cycles they're running and how they're being driven. You know, they're being driven at, I won't say high rates of speed, because obviously we're in a small community, but they are driven hard. It's all the same driver every day, so it's, there's always different behaviors.
And some motors that run constantly.
Yeah, and, you know, like I said, I mean, even if we weren't to replace it, I think some notes about, you know, I, I have to sit in those cruisers to work on the computers every once in a while. They've got springs sticking up my butt. I mean, it's just, they're, they have to have some other interior things dealt with it if we were even to maintain it. Um, and that's not a reason to do it, I'm just saying that they are, you know, they're heavily used. And so, you know, almost like, unlike a, um, well, you know, I was going to say, the other equipment will be a fire engine, right? Well, a fire engine doesn't actually leave very often, right? Doesn't have the same miles on it, so has a longer, a longer life expectancy. But the same thing, when you have pump overhauls happen because you've got all these run times, you know, the run, run rates and stuff. Um, it's just, it's, it's the maintenance we have to do and the things we have to do to take care of the assets. And I think what concerns me more about it is the breakdowns that are, that are unexpected. Right, not being able to get to a call and have to go find a jump kit to jump it, because I've got cruisers out of here already and there's no one else here to respond, is a problem.
Are they, are these set on a, set up on routine maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, they are. Yeah, they are. So what is it, quarterly, monthly, what is it typically, you know?
I saw the plan. I, I wanna say it's on a mileage, it's on a hourly rate, or a weekly, you know, based on how many, it's in, it's in a car rotation, so depending on how many times it's on duty, I think it's when it gets called out to do an oil change or something. It's definitely on a, on a routine. I had a copy of that at one point, too. I could try to dig it up, but, but again, there are, there are, you know, Cars Three, Four are definitely over the ninety thousand mark, well, will be over the ninety thousand mark, if not beyond. Car Five is, you know, by the time the car gets here.
How long does it take?
We're looking at, I think the lead time for is.
Six weeks, usually.
Oh, yeah, I thought I heard eight, but.
Yeah, it, it's probably another, it's probably another two, two to three months out, before all of them are back, are able to be in service here.
Taking that, taking out. You know what bothers me? We buy these, and every time we buy them, we say, oh, all this equipment, this is gonna be able to be used in the next one. And it's funny, it never is.
But, no, but I stand, I, I like to correct that, because all the equipment that's been in the cruisers here have been in at least two cycles of cruisers now. This is all different body styles, unfortunate part, right? So we have to replace a lot of it. The radio's not being replaced, some of the higher-end stuff are not being replaced, but.
I see, crazy.
So.
So.
Frank first.
So my, my suggestion would be that we get two new cruisers and not get three. That we take any of the best parts out of the cars that are gonna be turned in and put them into the existing cars. So for example, if we have an issue with the seats, or we have an issue with the cage, take the best cages out. Take the best cages out, or whatever, and use them. Or if it's repaired sufficiently now, that there's not an issue, do that. Car Five, I think it's got, according to the seventy-one point five thousand miles on it. If I use the numbers of miles driven per month at seventy-two, that lasts a year, until I hit the ninety-something thousand miles, so I'm not seeing why we need to turn that car in. You know, if you wanna use the numbers of a hundred, a hundred and two miles per week, whatever, calculate it down from there, it'll go another three quarters of a year. But my point is, I think that we've gotta get out of the cycle of buying big bunches of cars at one point, and then all of a sudden, having to buy big bunches again in another couple of years. With stats spreading out like we used to, it makes some sense out of this.
Kevin?
From, from the numbers you have here, from eleven-eight on two thousand twelve, you have, on Car Five, sixty-one thousand. On four-two, you only have seventy-one thousand, that's ten thousand miles, and.
I believe it was down for an injury replacement, right?
Yeah, and, 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 and this is where we're, we're in this, this spot, because I look at it with the miles. And, you know, it has been, it has been less reliable than the others, so, you know. Wh- which car are people gonna go into first?
Yeah.
Probably Car Three. So, I mean, I, I get it. I mean, and that's kind of the spot we're up against, is Car Six was set up to not be able to be replaced, because it wasn't outfitted the same as the other three, so it had limited use. Car Five, we're kind of in this catch-22. The mileage is lower, it's been less reliable, you know? And I'm not sure, honestly, if I threw the question back to the chief, which two would you get rid of?
Probably keep Car Three.
I bet, he, he would probably keep Car Three.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you why, because Car Three is specifically driven by a single individual for the most part, because he's on a day shift, and that's the highest rotation he's on. Car Five is probably the one, it's probably floating between different drivers all the time.
There really isn't that many miles difference, only five thousand between the two, so I can understand. If it's a better vehicle, and one person's been driving, and it's been overall, I would say, keep it and get rid of another one.
I sort of agree with Frank saying, like you said, seventy-one thousand miles on it. If they put another thirty on it in a year, it's a hundred thousand. You just did some major repair. So you got a brand-new fuel pump, which I would consider major. I don't know if you guys understand cars at all, but your axle, and, and brakes and routine maintenance, but.
Well, I think the point is, we do whatever we have to do to make it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. But, I mean, that, that expense was big because of the fuel pump. That's why that number was so big, that thirteen hundred.
Right.
I, I.
Yeah, I think it's up to the chief to decide which cars actually go in.
Right.
If we, if we, if we say it's gonna be two cars, then it's up to the chief to decide which two cars go.
I think it was a good, good idea where Frank said, take out the equipment that is good in one and put it in another. I know that's gonna cost us some money, but hey, it costs money to buy a brand-new one, too, so I have to agree with him.
Yeah, just, just for clarity, though, the detailed cars that are going away don't have much in it. They've been stripped, other than the radio, there's probably nothing else. I don't think there's any gun holes, holes, or anything like that.
Well, that four, routine?
Huh?
Car Four, routine maintenance?
That's just what happened this year.
So that's not bad.
No, no, but it's also the car, if I was looking at it, Car Three and Car Four would be the first cars to go.
Car Three and Car Four?
We're saying two cars. But again, I would leave up to the chief to decide.
Jason, of, of these cars, three, four, five, and six, what are the, I'm gonna call them cohorts in terms of years of build?
They're all the same.
Are they all the same?
They're all two thousand tens. They all got put into, they all got put into service a little bit different time. Actually, I do have that information.
We had, actually, when they went into service, but it was.
I, I just wonder if we're seeing variations in the quality over the years, that's all.
Well, they, they, that may in fact be it, because they did come in different times, and they did go into service. That's why I think Car Five.
Yeah, Car Five, I think, was the last of the three to arrive, four to arrive.
Yeah, I think that's the case, too.
Car Five was?
I think so.
Are we gonna turn them?
Car Six just low, just because it's not.
It's on the same rotation.
Yeah, it can't be used in, it can't be used in primary rotation.
Are we gonna turn them in and get?
What, what's the issue with it? Why can't it be used? What, it has to be done?
It doesn't have, it doesn't have a radar, correct. It doesn't, the camera, I think it's failed. We're gonna fix that. We're always gonna fix that.
No, I mean, if it doesn't have a radar, that's good. Good for you.
Maybe for you, I guess.
Not for me.
No, you got the blinker issue.
All right, so, I think that.
You make the motion?
One second. One second, please. I think the goal is, if we do settle on two cars, the chief will resolve the other two cars, so they're frontlineable. Because we, you know, my messaging to him, and even the budget committee's message to it, is get Car Six in the rotation, figure out what it needs to take. So, we may be looking at other repairs of Car Six, hopefully, not significant, but you may be looking at some.
Let him decide which he wants to get rid of.
All right, I guess at this point, I'll take, entertain a motion, if that's what we wanna do.
Mr. Byron, I'll support your motion if you make it.
I'll make a motion?
Go ahead.
I make a motion, and we buy two vehicles.
Okay, motion made to buy two vehicles.
And maintain the rest.
Basically do what Mr. Byron suggested.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll second.
Take out the.